Good afternoon. It is 4:00 PM, June 6, 2022, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Work Session in session. And our first item is going to be the annual presentation from the Iowa City Area Development Group. And welcome. We have two people here to present today.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kate Moreland with Iowa City Area Development, and with me today is Austin Kornes, who's our Director of Business Development. So, thank you for having us. As you know, ICAD's mission is to create, collaborate, and lead regional economic development efforts that contribute to the creation and growth of companies, wealth, and quality jobs. We do this through a spirit of innovation and a culture of sharing that transforms knowledge into economic opportunity. We are nearing our 40th birthday, which is hard to believe. I'm a little older than that, but most of my life it's been around. And we do serve the communities of Iowa City, Corville, Tipton, North Liberty, Kelowna, Solon, Tiffin, Mano Colonies, West Branch, West Liberty, and all of Johnson County. Our goal is really to be available to assist interstate commerce companies with location or expansion projects, workforce development, and entrepreneurial services. We know that the majority of our growth in our business community comes from 85% of our growth comes from existing businesses in our communities, so we put a lot of effort into supporting our current businesses, especially over the past few years. To do that, we do an annual survey, a synchronous survey. And so here are just some results that we would have done last summer from our synchronous interviews, kind of from an overall perspective of all of Johnson County, and then we'll get into a little bit more Iowa City-specific data. So you can see here that 93% of the company's market share is stable or increasing. 89% have introduced new products. 91% have plans for new products in the next two years. We identified 810 new jobs through our synchronous visits. An $82.2 million investment identified for expanding and modernizing facilities. A lot of companies look to modernize during the period of COVID when they had a little bit less workforce there to be able to do that. And I'll just commend Austin, who does a lot of these. He did receive an award for Best in Iowa for his work in our synchronous program this year. 35% of companies report being at risk. These are some of our down threats or opportunities. 35% of companies report being at a risk of losing high-value employees. So about a third of companies are concerned about that. These are very similar to national trends with all of the great resignation, a lot of movement of workforce. 67% of companies reported experiencing recruitment problems. 40% of companies report supply chain disruption, as you know. So this is a little harder to read, but it does give you a little Iowa City comparison with Iowa and Johnson County. And I will say that predominantly the job growth in Iowa City comes from your manufacturing sector. So the Procter &amp; Gables, Oral B's, they grew significantly even during the COVID period because their their products were so badly needed. So I would say that Iowa City companies are faring well. Your numbers are a little bit higher, more positive compared to the state averages, and definitely on par with the county numbers. One exception may be the expansion of real estate in the Iowa City area, which we're keeping an eye on. And that's really, you know, some of our larger employers like ACT and Pearson in Iowa City that just are, they're not using the same footprint that they were prior to COVID. So a little bit of shifts happening for some of those large employers. So we're definitely, I guess, working with them and kind of trying to see how we can repurpose, or they're going to repurpose some of that real estate. About half the companies pre-COVID were looking to expand, and about three-fourths of those are still on track with plans to expand. So we are seeing still significant hiring, but I will say there is significant remote hiring happening in a lot of companies. And that's again true throughout the nation. When we look at workforce, and you remember these interviews did take place last summer, and it's really just a snapshot in time. Iowa looks to have had some recruitment challenges. Iowa City does recruitment challenges that are a little bit higher. There are also some greater challenges with internet technology and infrastructure that was, that were reported. But that was true countywide, too. So I think there's a good opportunity to be vigilant and continue to invest in that infrastructure that we know is happening right now in Iowa City. Whether people are working at home still or on the work sites, there's still a demand for high-speed internet. And just overall, some of the infrastructure needs that we heard about in the visits, regional transportation, affordable childcare and workforce housing, and rural broadband. These are obviously also workforce issues. So as we look to support workforce, to assist companies in bringing more people here, these are all important considerations. And then developable land is always an issue in Iowa City, just with land costs. So we continue to be cognizant of that as well. So Austin will head out here in the next few weeks to start interviews all over again, and we'll get kind of some updated data and hoping for some good participation. This is how we look at ways that we can provide programming and be able to provide the right resources for companies when we understand some of the current needs. As you probably know, the game of business attraction has really changed, and we really do target targeted business attractions. So in the areas of biotech, med tech, in partnership with the university, advanced manufacturing, and then logistics and distribution has been huge over the last several years and really, especially over the last two, and continues to be something. People are looking for warehouse close to the interstate, all those sorts of things as people try to bring things closer to where people are. And then I just wanted to share a little bit about Project Life. This was our largest project, I know, in my 10 years. And we initiated this back in May of 2021. We had a lead. It was a large biotech vaccine production distribution company. It was a $600 million investment, a 500,000 square foot facility, 500 jobs at $100,000 a year with benefits. So it was kind of the unicorn of projects. They looked at 200 sites across 25 states, and we submitted four sites in the region, one being in Iowa City. It's got narrowed down to the one site in North Liberty, and then we hosted a visit in November. And I will, I would just like to say I want to thank Jeff and Kelly from Corville. This was an all-hands-on-deck visit. We had the university at the table, Kirkwood, all the city managers, IEDA. We really put the full court press on with everyone's cooperation. And I think even through that process, we built a lot of great relationships. We learned of new assets we have in our community and how we can put those forward. And we stay in touch with the company to this day, and there may be an opportunity down the road. They asked to have a meeting afterward. So obviously, we learned we were 1B in February, which is just a nice way of saying number two. But we, again, hope there may be an opportunity in the future. And we certainly, it's led to other leads for biotech companies on a smaller scale. So we're continuing to follow up on some of those. Entrepreneurship has been, always been a tenet of our work. Some of our largest employers started out as startups, IDT, ACT, all spin-outs, MediRev. So some of these large employers started very small here. So we employed a new program this year called Builders and Backers. And this is, we're the third city in the United States to host this program. Liz has done an amazing job of kind of spearheading this with Heartland Forward, which is a national organization that helps fund this. We had 10 builders this spring in our cohort, and this coming year we will have 30. So we're expanding it to three cohorts over the next year. And we have reached into the community, into places, and connected with people that we normally were not reaching. So it has been absolutely amazing to see people coming up with ideas, raising their hand. We just, we close, I think, next week, the application process for June, and I think we had 20 applications as of Friday. So it's a very exciting new program. And then our goal is really to help those people early stage get to the next stage, which would be an accelerator, venture school, the BIPOC Business Accelerator in the South District. This is really just the beginning of the funnel, and I think we were really missing those people that needed more education and assistance to get going and a little bit of funding. We also have EntroFest coming up this week, so thank you. I know Iowa City is helping sponsor that. Well, how's that at Merge on Thursday and Friday of this week? So a lot of entrepreneurs in the area. From a workforce development standpoint, we continue to work with our partners at the EA around business or talent attraction marketing. And at this point, we have about 500 people in our talent hub. About half of them have submitted resumes. And these are people outside the area looking to come here. And so then we share that information with our employers and work to try to connect those people to opportunities. So that attraction marketing is going fairly well. We continue to bring our employers together monthly through the JOCO Talent Group. That's a partnership with Iowa City Area Business Partnership. We do workforce for young workforce, the ICR Future Work, to really connect kids to careers and to help our education systems connect to business. And then we will be assisting Kirkwood with their visioning process as they look to kind of reconsider their presence here, the programming that's needed, and really helping connect them to employers' needs so that we ensure that we have the programs that our people and our companies need for the future. We also worked with our Partners to the North on the Inclusive ICR Index. This DEI index was taken by 100 companies, small and medium-sized in our region. And we'll have some results here this summer, but it'll give us a regional picture of where there's some need, where there's some support need for business to be able to have good DEI policies and practices and procedures. So we will be doing that year in and year out to try to gauge our progress and really see how we can support our businesses in this area. And then a few other investments we made this year. We did fund the Inclusive Economic Development Plan that Astic Planning did, and I'm sure you'll be hearing results about. I know many of you were at the Strategic Doing Event this past week where projects came out of that when we learned about some of the barriers and opportunities. So we'll continue to work with that group in our own work to ensure that our work has a lens where we really are working to break down some of those barriers for business. And then just a few other activities. We expanded, we've never had a commercial MLS, but we were able to partner with a technology company called Resimplify, and that's an add-on to our LOIS, which is very cumbersome technology where we have to enter all the data. Resimplify scoops all of the commercial data up for us, and so we have a much more robust picture of what our commercial listings are. So, will soon, sorry. I act like it's already happening. It's happening very soon. But we worked with Iowa City Area Realtors on that, some of our commercial developers. And so I think it's going to be a really good thing for our region. HNI has come to town. That'll be more formally announced soon, but moved into the new, or the old AIC facility. IC Cannabis took over the McCarrill facility, so some of these properties that were sitting are now being occupied, which is great. We host build Johnson County events quarterly where we're bringing developers, real estate builders, and our public entities together to have conversations about kind of the future of building, the ease of doing business, and some of the things to look for from a design perspective, from our architects, kind of what's coming in the future. And then we've been working, Tom's been working closely with the county and a company that's working on this solar triangle in Johnson County. It's currently in a MISO study, so we're just in year one of that. But it's a 150-megawatt facility that has enough power to power all of Iowa City and Corville. So it would be an amazing facility if that makes it through the process. It'd probably be acquired by a utility at some point, but we're very optimistic about the potential there. And that would be south of Johnson County, or south in Johnson County. We also continue to help support the diversity markets, the South District SMID, sitting on their board, and just continuing to help grow that area economically. And then these are just our KPIs that we keep track of for the three-year period of our campaign. Just to give you an idea of kind of where we are, we're on target for all of our, on target or above for all of our categories. And in light of COVID, I'm very proud of the team because it's not been an easy couple of years, being able to have met these goals. So wanted to share those with you as well.
What is a KPI?
The performance indicator, key performance indicator.
Thank you.
So when we did our campaign, we just shared with our investors that we would keep track of these metrics to know if we're being successful. And then the Iowa EdTech Collaborative, we received a grant, federal grant, for $391,000 to advance ed tech in Iowa. So this is a statewide initiative that ICAD is running point on. And our goal really is to build the ed tech industry, to further build it. We're the home of so much great educational programming, testing, assessment, and technology. And so we wanted, we had a study done at the state level, and because of our workforce and the number of companies, they felt like we were the place where we could grow that for the rest of the state. So we have Mark Butland, who is the former dean of Kirkwood here in Iowa City, that's heading that up. And he's doing a great job bringing partners together from all over the state to really see what we can do to increase the number of ed tech startups, to advance innovation in education, to become thought leaders. We worked with educators and high school students this spring on entrepreneurial skills. That Design Dash, we hope, will spread across the state. We're working to pilot that here and then, and let others then take the mantle and have it in other parts of the state. So there's a huge opportunity there. Post-COVID, ed tech is a booming industry. We knew it was big before, but now it's really booming. And I think one of the opportunities with the College of Ed has been the social-emotional learning piece of this, the mental health components of this, and they're doing so much great work in that area. So Dan Clay, the dean there, has been really involved in this as well. So lots of good work happening in that.
Has there been any, I'm sorry. Has there been any pushback about the social-emotional learning piece of it? Because I know that there's, there has been some, you know, kind of national debate about how inclusive or not inclusive it is. And I just wondered if that's something that is on the radar? Because I know equally, as you're presenting, there's so much that you're doing about DEI. So I just wondered if sort of those connections were being made so that there could be some discussion that sort of helps solidify its importance.
Right. What I would say, one of the, one of the working groups is working on kind of a quality seal of approval, which if we could get, we're hoping to get that going in Iowa. So this becomes a place where if you have an ed tech company and you want to have it able to pilot in a school district or with an educator, we will help you do that. But you need to meet certain requirements, and we need to get feedback. And then we have a group of academics and industry experts that will say this meets, and they're working on what the standards are for that right now. So that would be one of them. Like, does this meet the requirements that we need it to? I think that's where there's an avenue for us to be a big player in that. There's also, you know, whether, a lot of school districts have said, when we've met with them, we get inundated with these ed tech companies. We don't know what's, you know, good or bad or indifferent, and they don't have time to vet those, right? They're busy taking, you know, educating kids and being administrators. And so if there's a part we can play to try to kind of help pilot the things that are ready for, to be piloted, that have been vetted a little bit, then that's a role we feel like we could potentially play. So that's a great point on the DEI piece, though. I think there's some old programs out there. There's some new ones coming online, and that's certainly something that we need to keep an eye on.
Sounds fantastic. Thank you.
And then just lastly, I'd share, I know I've been in front of you before, and I hope we will be back in hopefully July to share with you the final pieces of the Better Together 2030 Vision. So we are very close to being able to unveil that to the public. And thanks to all of you who participated and provided feedback. We're very hopeful that this, and I can tell you with certainty, it's going to nest nicely underneath the larger seven-county ECI cog vision that we've been working on as well. This will just be very specific to Johnson County. And my partners on this endeavor will be back in front of you to, will do kind of a roadshow to unveil the plan here over the next 30 to 60 days. So we're going to hit the ground running. The work is really just beginning. So thank you to all of you. I know a lot of great projects and programs and things that are happening are going to fit nicely. They're already underway. We just want to be able to keep moving together and growing in the same direction and supporting one another and collaborating. So just very appreciative of all your support of ICAD and our work. I have an amazing team that has, just like all of you, had a rough couple of years, but they pivoted, and we've pivoted back. And I will say, I feel like our community, our businesses are thriving. This is obviously a place people want to live. We've grown 16% over the last 10 years, and I checked, it puts us fifth in the Midwest behind Sioux Falls, Bismarck, Fargo, and Des Moines in percentage of growth. So I think it's important to note that we are in very good company, and we're growing at a very good pace. That said, workforce continues to be a challenge for everyone, so we need to stay vigilant. We know a lot of our growth is in our immigrant population, and so we're going to work hard in the next several years to ensure that we're partnering with our education partners and our businesses to make sure we're upskilling people and putting them in a position that they can be economically successful coming out of this period of time. So that will be something we'll be working hard on. Yeah, and I just, I want to, again, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have for Austin or myself.
Kate, do you have any idea what, if there are any particular elements that, in that, in that one biotech effort that caused us to be 1B instead of 1A?
Yeah, thank you. We got a lot of feedback from the company when, when we finally learned, after about a year of working with them, that we had come in second. They pointed to a couple very specific things, primarily around the incentive package that we were able to put in front of them. There was a couple ways that the place they chose framed their incentive package that was more beneficial to them upfront. And they were interested in lowering their initial costs as kind of a first priority. So they pointed to that, and then there were a couple other issues with just the way that they were able to communicate with some state and federal legislators legislators on the project, that they liked the relationship more in another state. So we received glowing feedback for the region, and they said that when they look to do an expansion, they're going to be reaching out to us. So I think the thing to highlight the most there, though, is we've already heard from other companies. We've heard from a lot of folks who read the articles, saw that we showed well, and they want to learn why. So we've already, it's led to some other leads that we're really excited about.
Thanks.
Now, I'm curious, do we know what community or what state they landed in?
Manhattan, Kansas.
Yeah. And this is a company that was very early-stage revenue, revenue stage. So that funding for them for upfront costs was critical, and that was a state package. That wasn't something we could necessarily compete with, so. And we didn't know that at the time, but we couldn't have competed at that level anyway. So.
Do we know the 16% growth in population? Where are people coming from?
The 16% growth? That's based on the census data.
An idea of where they're immigrating from?
The, I don't know if I've dug into the migration data. The, I know our, I think the immigrant population, what, do you remember the percentage, Jeff?
I don't remember a percentage. Looking back at the past decade, most of our growth has been in international immigration. I think the general trend that we see is, you know, the historic pipeline of rural Iowa to the urban centers is starting to dry up, and more and more of our population growth is having to come from out of state or out of country.
We do see migration from Illinois. I know that. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Yes, really appreciate all the work that ICAD does. And I know our businesses absolutely do. All right, we are on to our next item, which is the presentation of the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan. We're going to welcome Tracy Heishu. Hello?
Put this up. Thanks, Mayor. As you noted, I'm Tracy Heishu with Neighborhood Development Services. And as you know, the city adopted Affordable Housing Action Plan back in 2016 to support and encourage affordable housing in our community. It outlined 15 action steps that we could take. 14 of the 15 of those are completed. The 15th action step was incorporated in this plan, and we'll be going over through those recommendations as we go through this. I did want to thank, the report was possible due to a committee of members that you see up on the, on the screen. I want to thank them for their time, their willingness to serve. This was a year-long process, and just sharing their expertise, and that is why you're getting the recommendations and the plan that you see before you. I wanted to go over just the timeline. So back in November 2020, City Council asked us to come up with an action plan to build off that previous one. We formed the committee. We held our first meeting in February 21. From March to October of '21, we met monthly. After that, we did continue to meet by email, running by drafts, revisions. They reviewed a ton of data. So they reviewed housing market analysis, housing reports, summary information, census data, Fair Action Housing Study. And based on all that information, we formulated recommendations. But we also had a vigorous public outreach, and that was the summer of '21. It included the ARPA, all the citywide survey listening posts. We had outreach activities that were very, very effective. So we went out to neighborhood events. We went to our food bank distribution sites. We had staff there. We had a list of 15 to 20 actions. And basically, we asked people, we'll give you three votes. If we were to fund something, what would we fund that would help your household best as it comes to affordable housing? And those recommendations are, I think, on the last page in the appendix for you to review. Went very well. We met with stakeholders. We input it, we got input from the organizations with the high-level expertise in housing. And then we completed the report in '22 in April, and that was in your council packet a couple of weeks ago. Throughout this process, I've been asked, what is affordable housing? That gets asked a lot when you're out in the community. It's basically your income, what is 30% of your income should be for housing plus utilities? Now, it can be any income, but what's affordable to you is what the 30%. Now, when it comes to what the government, like city, federal, state, what we will subsidize, we usually limit the beneficiaries to those that are making below 80% of median income. Now, if we go to homeownership activities, sometimes you see programs go up to 100, 110% median income. And for renters, we typically cap that at 60%. So those are the folks we're helping. And we primarily, even though we say we go up to 60% renters, you'll see that in our programs, we typically assist people at below 50% of median income, and a lot of times below 30%. Then people ask, oh, what is affordable housing when it comes to rent or homeownership? So all of our programs typically limit rent to the fair market rent. And does that mean it's affordable to someone at 30%? No. It means the HUD fair market means about 40% of the housing in our market are below that threshold, 60% are above. So it just means this is modest housing for our market. Now, the LIHTC, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project, will go by income. So you'll see different, you'll see different limits for different programs. And then the home price, HUD sets a home price for $247,000. We can't assist housing that's above this threshold. Does that mean it's affordable? No, not for many people, but we can't exceed that threshold. Now, can we have programs that are below that threshold? Sure. And we do. After the committee went through all that data and looked at all the information, they highlighted certain data that they felt were major takeaways. And this is what they highlighted, is that in our market, our renters are cost-burdened. Cost burden means that they're paying more than 30% of their income. Severely cost burden means that they're paying more than 50% of their income on housing. So you can see the numbers for renters and homeowners. Our rents have increased substantially. They went for, they've increased 11.3% in Johnson County over a five-year period. period. We're looking at the American Community Survey, Survey Data. And there's sparse or no available housing for those people at thirty percent of median income on the private market. So, there's fifty-two households over the age of twenty-five. So that, that takes out the student impact in those numbers, that are making less than twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine bucks. So, if you're at the top of that thirty percent affordable, at that top of thirty percent median income, affordable rent to you is most likely seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. If you're making minimum wage or you're on SSI, your affordable rent's probably closer to three-hundred dollars. So, the private market has a hard time coming up with housing to house those people at thirty percent or below. And our housing market is expensive. So you can see where the Iowa median home value is, one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. In Iowa City, we're about seventy thousand above that. In some markets in Iowa, you can buy a safe, decent, or affordable modest home for seventy thousand. Corvin, Corville, North Liberty are even having higher median housing values.
Interesting.
We have a lack of affordable homes for those under fifty percent of median income. We only sold one-hundred-and-thirteen homes in twenty-one to, that are below one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, a lot of thing goes into your ability to buy a home and what factors, but if you have minimal debt and one car payment, you're looking probably at a house about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we would consider affordable to you. And one of the last major takeaways is that we don't know the full impact of the pandemic. We're seeing shortages in building materials and labor. Our builders are reporting a twenty to thirty percent increase in costs from last year. And we don't know, will it go down? Will it continue? Will it get worse? Those are the things of the pandemic we don't know yet. And I wanted to throw in, this was not an affordable housing market analysis, but, or in the Affordable Housing Action Plan, but Kirk Lehman, one of our planners, did a residential analysis in, in twenty-twenty-one. And it looked at our final, our final plans and our building permit activity. And it was concerning for us because we anticipate ten thousand new residents by twenty-thirty. If the final plots are planted lots and our building permit activity continues, then we'll only accommodate less than half of the new residents. And so that means our, the folks that are coming into the area, they're going to have to go to upline communities where the cost of housing is just going to get more expensive. Because if you limit the supply and the demand continues, we're looking at it maybe even more problems with affordable housing in the near future. I also like putting this statistic up too, because like I said, when I, when I present to other communities, I present to the public, they just say, oh, affordable housing is just needed by our students. That, you know, we, we have a high income in Johnson County and Iowa City that, and it's all driven by students. So, if you take out householders under age twenty-five, we still have nine thousand households that make less than forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. And that's basically your fifty percent of median income range. So we have a huge need in our area. And as I said, nine percent of the Iowa City homes sold for less than one-hundred-and-fifty, with over half our market being sold for homes under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
This slide right here, does this account, the supply, does that account for student housing that's being built as well?
When we were looking at financial or planted lots, it was, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, the supply of planted lot, or planted residential lots.
Yep, yes. The problem with, it's harder to predict multifamily because you're talking about redevelopment. And if you have the Riverfront Crossing District, it's harder to predict what will be developed because you have to buy it, demo it. So it's a better indicator of, of greenfield sites. So, that, the multifamily residential is part of the Riverfront Crossing, it's still not going to meet our total demand because, as you know, many people might not, a high-rise living environment downtown might not be perfect or ideal for, for everyone. So, we're still concerned about how we house all our residents coming in. So based on, based on the information that you saw, the committee formulated three recommendations and they were broken out in three categories. The recommendations for existing policy and programs, for development regulations, and for programs and policies based on housing income, our household income, if we got more funds. We're going to take a hard look at development regulations. We're looking at those situations of, we'll have difficulty coming up with the money that we need to subsidize out of our affordable housing. So we need the private, we need to work with the private market and how do we create win-win situations to encourage private developers to make a diversity of housing in our, in our outline development? Because if, to be honest, new construction is typically not affordable unless you have great subsidy. So, however, if you have small modest housing, duplexes, townhomes, that's the affordable housing of tomorrow. So we want to make sure all neighborhood has a variety of housing in them. So, the recommendations for existing policies and programs. The first recommendation was to discontinue the affordable housing location model. We adopted the location model back in two thousand and eleven. The committee felt it wasn't producing enough housing, so they wanted to remove the model. And we just basically incent or prioritize developments in neighborhoods that we feel have a lack of housing opportunity. So, that was the first recommendation. The second was to acquire staff analysis and funding recommendations before they go to HCDC for CDBG home projects. And a lot of that was, we don't know at any one time the expertise that will find in the Housing Community Development Commission. Some people might have some knowledge, but there are times where we might not have anybody familiar with housing finance or financial expertise or even building. So, or even the home regs, the Home and Community Development Block Grant Regulations. So, they want a staff to make a recommendation for HCDC to review and then they provide their recommendation from that. They don't have to match staff's recommendation, but just to get the logic or what the reasoning was. And then just to generally be more transparent about how we recommend funding. They recommended allocating more funds to the Affordable Housing Fund, basically increasing the amount by three percent every year. Then the next recommendation was largely, we have a set aside in our Affordable Housing Fund for money going to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. And what this would basically say, right now, we separate the money. We have a general set aside and then we have a set aside for low-income housing tax credit projects. So what they're saying is that if we don't get a low-in, LIHTC project, or we, it doesn't get funded by the Iowa Finance Authority, then that can go back into the general pool and they can allocate that out to general applications. And then the next one was the, to implement the Risk Mitigation Fund. And we do have funds budgeted for that, we just have not been able to establish a relationship with the service provider to implement it. So, a risk mitigation fund basically functions as a landlord guarantee. It says that we're going to provide added protection for a landlord, for someone who maybe has limited income, might have criminal history, has a poor rental history, and will basically say, if you rent to this person, we will help you with, if you have lost income, if you are lost rent, if you have excessive damages, or you have legal fees that are beyond your security deposit, is to get them comfortable renting to a person that might, they might not rent before. So, we will be working with that and we'll probably in the next month or two come back to you with a proposal for that. The next recommendation was basically policies and it goes after your permanent affordability. We partner more with nonprofit affordable housing providers whose mission is to have affordable housing. So when we assist them, they keep this housing in their, in their portfolio and it's pretty much permanent affordability. We also allow those nonprofit affordable housing developers to apply for additional funds to support their operations. It's to increase their capacity. So, they might come to us out of the Opportunity Fund. If they become a cho to a community housing development organization, we allow them to apply for that. We also allow developers to apply for technical assistance. So if they want to develop, like in the South District that has a form-based code, they would apply to us through various funds to get money for architectural engineering. So we help them build their capacity to, to comply with our regulations and to build. Might be that they want to incorporate energy efficiency, so we allow them to tap into climate action grants. Next one was to encourage but not mandate a permanent affordable housing in our new residential annexations. We're trying to create those win-win situations that lead to permanent affordability. Do we identify a revenue stream that would help us buy the lot to, to give an RFP to a, to nonprofit, to, to buy that lot, to operate as affordable housing, so that we work together with the developer when we're annexing? And to increase efforts to educate all tenants about tenant rights and responsibilities and how to address housing issues. And we are working with the University of Iowa Student Government. I believe you saw their magnets about educating students about who to call if they have problems with their housing, if they have problems with their lease. So, we're working through those and we'll try to continue those efforts to educate tenants about their rights.
I did have a question before you go on. For the CDBG Home Fund, it was before this one. Increase of transparency, I guess I was curious as to maybe one example?
Maybe, we have a scoring criteria that we ask HCDC members. So when they look at a policy, they rank it based on certain, there's a certain point score. But when you go to allocate that project, they might, let's say they got ninety percent of the points, but they're only going to get fifty percent of their allocation. They want to know why, why that is. If they scored highest, should they not get the most?
I got it.
So, just, there's not a perfect way to allocate funds. So, just more transparency in how we funded and why we funded what we didn't. I think that the staff recommendation when we do that budget will help. You know, it might be that high need, they have the capacity, but do they have the capacity to do four homes as opposed to two homes? So do you fully fund two homes? And even though that might not be what the, the scoring criteria says. So just greater transparency, I believe, in how we allocate.
Thank you.
The next recommendations regarding development regulations, and some of these are technical, some of these are, we'll need a comprehensive plan amendment. So that's why you're going to see us coming to you later to basically get your priorities and about what you want us to proceed with. For single and multifamily, these recommendations apply to both. We'll encourage infill development by just increasing flexibility, reducing the minimum amount of land eligible to apply for a planned overlay zoning, create more form-based code regulations for additional neighborhoods, and we'll, we'll focus on those ones that we, we know that are growth areas. Applicable to single family, we see this a lot, I think, for a lot of the stakeholders, this was their number one, was allow by right more types of dwelling units in single-family zoning districts such as duplexes, zero-lot lines, that small-scale residential component instead of seeing single-family detached over and over and over block after block. So, we'll be looking at that. Increase the allowable number of bedrooms in our single-family zonings for basically your duplex zero-lot lines. Allow accessory dwelling units in what we call ADUs. Some people call them mother-in-law, there's a whole bunch of names that these go by. Under more circumstances, because right now we don't allow freestanding buildings, they have to be attached to the house, the garage. We require it to be owner-occupied, the main house. So we'll be looking at, how do we encourage this? Because we don't see it that often in Iowa City. And in what locations do we encourage it? For multifamily, it was to facilitate multifamily development by purchasing land. We have had land banking in the past. We have lots in Lindeman that we've purchased previously. To be even more proactive, we conduct a city-initiated rezoning to allow multifamily housing or mixed housing in areas supported by the comprehensive plan. Except the comprehensive plan, if you're by an arterial, if you're by transportation, then we would automatically just zone that multifamily so someone doesn't have to come in and try to get the multifamily zoning. Because typically, people oppose multifamily zoning in a lot of locations. Allow multifamily dwelling units with more than three bedrooms. And that'd be, be because the LIHTC require, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit application basically says, a certain percentage of your development has to have four bedrooms. If we don't allow it by code, then it doesn't happen. So, do we change that? That's a recommendation that we change so that more of our LIHTC developers are successful when they, they go to compete in the IFA round? And then these are additional recommendations. So if we get more money and we dedicate that to affordable housing, how do we spend that? And we try to go, like I said, a healthy market, healthy housing market provides housing at everybody's incomes, it provides in their different stages of life. So we have recommendations for zero to thirty, thirty-one to sixty, and sixty to a hundred. So, under the, so for zero to thirty, these are the recommendations. Like I said, the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund was heavily encouraged. We continue to support existing permanent supportive housing, the housing first, such like Shelter House, it did for individuals that are, that experience chronic homelessness. If we can expand that into families experiencing chronic homelessness, next. Allocate ARPA funds and future city funds to support those large investments that prioritize permanent affordability in those households with lower incomes. And, oh, just in general, increase funds for, for all those things that we need to see in housing. Better energy efficiency, it lowers housing costs. So if you have a lower utility bill, it's helping you with your total housing cost. Aging in place initiatives. And because these are folks at zero to thirty, probably provide grants whenever we can. Thirty-one to sixty percent of median income, it was continuing our security deposit and expanding, security deposit assistance and eviction prevention programs. And it's also about reducing energy effici, or lower utility costs through energy efficiency and supporting down payment assistance also. And it was important to include the credit and financial counseling to potential home buyers. And then when you get to sixty, one to a hundred, it's the, the bottom two continued. The next step is just to get your count, feedback. I mean, it was a, it was a lengthy plan. Recommendation, like I said, there are almost thirty recommendations, is to get your feedback. And then what staff plans to do is to create a five-year implementation plan and we'll bring that back for you to consider and look at. It will combine the Affordable Housing Action Plan recommendations. Urban planning will be in the next couple of months, be presenting their housing development priorities to you regarding your strategic plan priorities as they relate to housing and what recommendations, such as what comprehensive plan amendments we, we proceed with. And then recently, we got a invested health grant, a collaboration grant with Henderson, Nevada and Eau Claire, Wisconsin. We went out to Fort Collins and met with a planning consultant called Logan Simpson. And they made recommendations about how, in our new development, how do we get that diversity of housing? You know, how, how do we get the duplexes, the townhomes, the small-scale residential in addition to single-family detached? So we'll combine all those, make a five-year implementation plan and bring that back to you for consideration. And that, that is a brief highlight of the Affordable Housing Action Plan. Do you guys have any questions?
One comment real quick, just to thank you to all of those who worked on this. I think, I think I sent out an email too, but just to reinforce that. Excellent work, a lot of really data-driven report, a lot of information in this. Obviously, a lot of time and effort went into it. So thank you to all those that worked on that. That's, this is a really helpful document.
Thank you.
I have a really broad policy question, Tracy. From these recommendations, it looks to be kind of a pragmatic approach, like, for example, the three percent increase in our Affordable Housing Fund. So for the five-year implementation plan, do you have a sense of sort of where that will get us in relation to the problem of the lack of affordable housing? Like, are we going to be able to peg it that way as far as addressing the shortfalls that you identified at the top of your presentation?
It wasn't necessarily an affordable housing study, so I don't think we'll completely, I don't know if this implementation, implementation plan will basically solve affordable housing in Iowa City, most likely not. But it gets us closer and closer to helping more and more people. So that, that's our goal. And we could put numerical things, but when you deal with development regulations, like even though we, we put like, we can change our zoning to encourage like a minimum density or different types of housing, we don't know what the private market will actually build. Just like we have ADU regulations right now that allow accessory dwelling units, we just don't get many. So we're trying to figure out what is it that people don't like about the regulations we have, what would encourage more? So I don't know if we can get to strong numerical numbers, but we could try, we can with the programs that we're assisting. That's much easier. So, if we're going to adopt a landlord risk mitigation, we can estimate about how many people will get into housing. So for our programs and, our programs, we can definitely put, we can attach numbers. For our development regulation changes, we can estimate, but we don't know.
If I could add to that, just to put some numbers in perspective, I think when we're subsidizing units, new construction is obviously more expensive than, than rehabs. But if we use the number of thirty thousand per unit assisted, which I think is fairly, it's in the range of what would, what we'd expect. We're helping with a million dollars a year, thirty-three, thirty-four households. And you just look at the growth numbers. If, if, if we're really expecting ten thousand people to, to come to our community in the next decade, you can do the math there. There's ten thousand people and we're assisting thirty-three units, we're able to assist a very small number. So, we're, we're working uphill with the supply and demand issues. You know, the development regulation piece is, is really, is really important. Unfortunately, that's also not going to be immediately felt by the community. Some of those policy changes may take decades to actually bear fruit. And I think we also have to remember that what we, what we want is the new construction that's built today, which may not be affordable right out of the gates, but it may be affordable, it may be our affordable housing stock of a different generation. And, and I think you can look at Iowa City's affordable housing stock now, that was probably largely built in the fifties, sixties, and seventies. That probably wasn't affordable housing right out of the gate either, right? That was probably maybe middle to upper-income housing at the time. So, it's, it's very complex, but a million dollars even with a three percent escalator is not going to solve this problem. You know, we'll update this report in five to ten years and I hope we've made good progress, but with the growth pressures we're facing and the supply that we have right now, I suspect we'll be, be doing good just to keep pace.
So, I'm really happy to see that, that you're talking about a risk mitigation fund. From, from what I've read about them in the past, they're actually pretty successful and they rarely get drawn on. Would, would something like that also be available to people who rent to people who are on Section Eight or who otherwise get housing vouchers? Because, I mean, I, I think the state legislature has passed a law that essentially says, not everybody has, you don't have to rent to them. But if you have, if landlords have the guarantee that, you know, that something happens, they'll be made whole, that make, that could make a big difference.
Just because you have a voucher, I mean, when we pull vouchers, there's a certain percentage of, of tenants that won't find a house with it, even though we've given them up to a year to search. And it's because of rental history or... and it's because of rental history or eviction history or whatever reason landlords are reluctant to lease for them. And if there's great competition for units, they don't have to. So, yes, so when we create that landlord risk mitigation program, it'll be anybody that's housed, or how, what do you call it, hard to house. So if that's a Section 8 tenant or a housing choice voucher tenant, yes, we would help those, them too. And we're really relying on a social service provider to build those, like a case manager, building a relationship with landlords, so they feel comfortable saying, I have a tenant, we're going to be working with this tenant throughout their occupancy, the lease, and we have this fund, so if there's excessive damage or you, they leave early, we can protect that. These are, here are the funds for that. Yeah, from prior, from other cities that have done it, they rarely get drawn on. It's more of a comfort to the landlord to lease to that person. So, but we were prepared, if there's a claim and it qualifies, we pay it out.
It almost makes some of those people who are seen as high-risk, some of the lowest risk, and it lays bare some of the prejudices as well.
You talked about permanent affordability, and one of your slides was preserving affordable housing. Does that relate to, we've heard a lot of comments about some of the affordable housing units are for 10 years or for 20 years rather than perpetuity? So is that what you're referring to? Maybe get rid of that 10-year, 20-year limit?
So you have a nonprofit, they buy a house, it's 10 years later. Even though you subsidize at the beginning, over time, if they have, if they're limited in their rent that they can collect, houses, you know, you need a roof every 15 years, 15 to 20 years. You need substantial renovations, and so if we do permanent affordability, that means we're making a commitment also to funding rehab. So you're going to see acquisition and rehab of older housing stock is, that's how you produce a lot of affordable housing today. So that's why it's important that we have that stock and we zone, and we change our regulations so there's that stock, you know, because I think a lot of things that we build by right now for affordable housing, as Jeff mentioned, are 50, 60, 70s, even 90s. So you rarely, unless it's a Lytec, you rarely see new housing in their portfolios unless it's through some program like a Lytec project.
I think the, you know, the devil is in the details with this sort of plan, and I do think that, you know, some of the areas where higher density has potential is also the areas where we have, from my perspective or sense, a competition between affordability for student housing and the general public. And so there's, that's a challenging situation. I mean, I do feel we, I know the focus is with this has not been on the student housing question, right? It's, that's a different question. But it does seem to me it needs to be addressed, because right now there is considerable competition in the university impact zone between the affordability needs of the students and everyone else.
There'll be a lot of work.
All the duplexes and the, you know, what I'm concerned with is while I, on the one hand, promote, you know, all the strategies and more that are in this report, including in addition to what I guess could be referred to as the U standards, zoning allowing higher density, the dimensional standards and lifting or waiving the off-street parking requirement, things of that sort. However, if we were to do that in the university impact zone, it could just incentivize more student housing, which I'm not against, but, you know, we do have the, in our comprehensive plan, trying to achieve that balance. So it's, it's a challenging issue, and, you know, I hope we can come up with a way of resolving that, because I think some of the largest potential for getting at affordable housing is in the center of Iowa City, the university impact zone.
You'll see some of these recommendations are easy, we can accomplish them, you know, if you're okay with it, we can do it tomorrow. You know, some of these are going to require a comprehensive plan amendment, and that's when you're going to dig into the details. When is this appropriate? Is it appropriate in the central planning district? Is it not? Is it just part of greenfield development? So those are things that when we, like I said, that's why we're doing a five-year implementation plan, because if you're talking about a major comprehensive plan update or a new comprehensive plan, that's going to take some time. That takes, might even take a consultant, might be a multi-year process, and so that's when we're answering those questions and going out for public input. So, like I said, that implementation plan will be important to figure out how we, what things we can do that are most impacted in the short term and what's going to take in maybe a multi-year commitment, and then figuring that out. So, not easy questions.
Well, in addition, not all the under 25s are students. There are plenty of younger, sort of between high school and that age, who are, who've opted for, not to go to college or to go to trade school or something, or who are working but are still low income.
Yeah, the way the census reports data, we didn't have a great way of kind of mitigating student impact besides by age. So yes, there are plenty of folks under 25 that aren't college students that fall in that 50, 30% median income. So we acknowledge that, it was just a way to answer folks when they basically say, you're just reporting you need affordable housing, or you don't have low-income folks because they're just students. So that's kind of what we fall back and say, that's not necessarily true.
Thank you so much. All right. We are on to clarification of agenda items. Here in nothing, we'll go to information packets. We'll start with May 19th. We'll go on to May 26th.
I just, I don't really have clarification about IP2, the information on the strategic plan final report. Really appreciated the staff's putting all that together. It include, because there are some very, very challenging issues that have been dealt with, that did in the end fit under, pretty much, within the strategic plan. The, to be honest, the only element that occurred to me that was probably missing when you're talking about COVID was the effort to really reach all people in the community by making most of our, most of our information and announcements, doing it in multiple languages, both by video and written, and I think that was an important element. I'd love to see that inserted in there.
Anything else? We'll move on to June 2nd. And we do have IP6, the memo from the Community Police Review Board that we need to discuss. Maybe we'll, Eric, did you want to lead us through that request?
Well.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's all right. I don't have a whole lot to offer. Hopefully, you've all had an opportunity to review. I've got it up before me, the packet information with proposed amendments for the police, Community Police Review Board. As you'll see, there are a number of different changes that are proposed, all of which have been put forth by the CPRB. I guess I'm here to answer any questions you may have, or if you'd like to take these and not those, or however you like to split it up, or if you'd like to discuss any of them further, I'm happy to try to facilitate that.
Mayor, maybe I can just offer, there wasn't much discussion at the CPRB meeting about the proposed changes. My understanding from the presentation from their attorney, Patrick Ford, was that it was mostly to just kind of align with what they're doing already. The one deletion at the beginning, as far as it was relating to, sorry, not at the beginning, where they struck language saying, making a recommendation that the police chief or the city manager reverse or modify their findings. He indicated that there wasn't really authority or basis for that in the ordinance, and so that was not something that had occurred before, didn't expect it to occur, and was making a clarification there. It's what I recall from their conversation.
And I should clarify too, for the benefit of council, remember, this is one of those independent boards or commissions that my office does not staff. And so, as Laura has indicated, that's represented by Pat Ford, a local private attorney, and so that's why our office doesn't really have a whole lot to offer about this.
So what is the, just wanted to maybe, are there any other comments from counselors? Or how do you propose we kind of, I think we can certainly, you know, go through and kind of determine where we want to be?
I felt the comments or the suggested revisions made perfect sense to me, and it's interesting, Laura, that you were saying that the clarification on that struck language was really just to say, well, that wasn't actually something that was possible for them to do anyway, because as it reads now, I was like, I like the clarity of that, to say, there will be a report that says exactly what the decisions were and why, why there's disagreement. So it might have been a nicety of language or a point of law, but I liked the actual revision, because I think that there's a very clear action item for a situation like this. So I just, I appreciated the revisions very much, and I'd love to learn that this is stuff that is actually already being done, because it seems to, in this climate where there is so much that the state has dictated what can and can't be done, that at least the review board is trying to promote some proactive steps.
I also appreciated these comments from the board and value their opinion. Obviously, they gave this a lot of thought as far as what they felt could help make their task easier, so I'm in favor of it.
Having been the liaison for a while, these, as opposed to some of the other stuff that we got earlier, struck me basically as common sense and a way to make things run as smoothly as possible.
Okay. So it sounded like there is majority support to accept these amendments?
Yeah.
Okay, so. We'll need to.
We'll draft them and have them on a future agenda.
Okay, all right. Any other comments about that one? June 2nd, any other items there that we want to discuss?
I wanted to discuss IP4 on the Happy Hollow Ball Field update. And I think in brief, basically, what I would ask is that, you know, two years ago, approximately, the ball, the ball field, the infill was replaced with turf grass, with a reclassification by that process to a recreational field. And at that time, there was considerable community comment and concern generated by that, by that action, in part because of the fact that we did not have any kind of neighborhood public engagement in the process. And so we discussed it at that time, that I think in part because of that lack of a community participation in the planning of that reversion or conversion of the field, that we would revisit it in roughly two years to, in a sense, in my view, kind of assess if whether the, you know, the issues and concerns that were expressed two years ago still had, you know, were still there, were still of a concern to the community, or if in fact, in assessing, you know, what had been done, that there was different perspectives, whatever they may be. And so what I would ask is that we, having made that decision to at least consider having that public process at this time, that we proceed with that as a response to that specific issue of the field. So in other words, have that public process. Sometime, I would suggest in late summer, early fall, sometime in September, that we would, we would engage the community, because it would be more than simply a neighborhood process because of the fact that the ball field was used by people from all over the city. And have that meeting and see where, you know, where the public is in terms of how the field is being used now. And in a sense, you know, in the work that I did, we would often do kind of a post-occupancy evaluation, you know, where you have an opportunity after a period of time to assess how well the facility is performing. And so it's not uncommon to do this, and in a sense, this would be an opportunity to kind of see, you know, how things have gone and what if any concerns are either still valid, or if new concerns have arisen. But in any event, just kind of see where things are now to help us, help inform how we move forward.
I was on council when we had this discussion, and I do remember it being a topic that the council at that time thought we would revisit within two years. Some decisions had already been, you know, made and expressed, and so I think it would be appropriate to do a conversation, as you've mentioned, just to get a report and see what the community is.
I would support that.
I would too.
Yep.
So.
So just saying, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting this year to talk about the ball field, and then next year, we're going to have another one to talk about the major park renovation, the playground replacement. That's how it's going to play out.
Yeah. Well, you can speak. I think if we visited about the ball field, that can inform what's going to happen next year, is my thought.
Okay.
I just think we need to keep the commitment that we made, and I understand the other has been shifted. I think it's just, I mean, it could, it could turn out that the community has moved on and is used to using other ball fields now and says, let's just leave it, or it could be, you know, we don't know what the outcome is going to be.
Yeah, it's not, and it's not a matter of really, you know, if the decision is to revert to dirt, then the decision's to revert to dirt, we'll happily do that. But there's a lot of staff capacity that gets tied up in these efforts, and when we're just going to the same park and having the same discussion in two, you know, back-to-back years, there is an impact to that. And my preference would be, you know, for the council, just if you want it back to dirt, put it back to dirt. We can do that this year, we'll use our operating budget and we'll do it and we'll move forward. But it's a lot of effort to go through a public input process like this, to get that feedback, and then to do it again the next year, to do work in the same park.
Is there a way to get public input on this electronically or a different avenue than?
Yeah, we could put all those together, surveys. I'm not opposed to doing it, I just want you to understand the impact of duplicating this type of effort, because essentially, we're going to be going and asking the questions about the park for two consecutive years. So it's just an acknowledgement that that's a lot of time and energy spent on that one park in back-to-back years. If that's what you want, that's fine, we can do it. But I just want to make sure the council's aware of some of the organizational capacity issues that we face, and this is just, you know, one more thing that we're going to work into our schedule this year and the next year.
When next year, would next year's meeting be?
We're getting started on planning for next year's capital projects this summer. So we typically would try to combine them with a party in the park or a rec and roll type of event, where we can get just general neighborhood interest out there. So it'd typically be the summer of next year is what we would plan.
What about moving up the playground? I mean, if you want to consolidate meetings, because the playground was originally scheduled for 2023, and it was moved back.
Right.
So if we, if we want to try to consolidate the public process, we could move it back up.
You could move the project back up, there's financial implications to that, if you want to slide, slide those funds up. Or we can get input two years early, essentially. We could do it this year, get two years of input on the playground. I think our experience would tell us that if we get all that input and those plans sit for two years, whatever we bring forward still might be a surprise to some. sit for two years, whatever we bring forward still might be a surprise to some neighbors.
I, you know, I'm not opposed to try to consolidate the meetings as long as we have them as soon as possible. And I'm not, I don't know that there's any issue with there being a longer gap between the implementation of the playground, if, if that's something the council would support.
Yeah, it would, the, the only difference I think would be is we don't have a consultant on board. Normally, we would hire the consultant and have them help participate in the input process. And because this project's a couple of years out, we have not engaged anybody, so we can do the, we can certainly do engagement without engage, without having a consultant onboard. Next year, we would bring that consultant onboard to start designing the work, and we'll just have to present them with that neighborhood input as opposed to having them participate in that.
I mean, the, the one, one, one thing to keep in mind is the, the constituencies for the ball field and for the playground are probably going to be different constituencies, so the, the outreach is going to need to acknowledge that.
Right, well, they, they may be overlapping as well, because everybody-
I think they probably will, but I, yeah, there's, you know, based on the comments from two years ago, the, the ball field community extends, you know, it's, Iowa City as a whole, to a certain extent.
I think the bottom line still is that two years ago, we made that commitment, or it was said, that we would revisit in two years, and, and I think we have to, to stick to that, because I think that some of the community members and neighborhood members may, may have been anticipating that. And whether that means we need to discuss it in a work session, as you'd said, Jeff, you know, do the dirt fill now, but obviously, we need some pub, a little bit of public input on it. Whether it could be electronically, that'd be fine too, but I think it just boils down to the two years is passing, and we shouldn't wait another two years.
And I think also, I'm very mindful of all that staff does, and so to consolidate makes sense. You know, you, what you suggested, Jeff, where, where that work can be done, but not to redouble it. And sure, consultant may not, we probably don't, weren't even considering the consultant this year, so there's probably not money for it, but if we could get the input, that seems to make sense, but without unduly burdening staff to, to two sets of, of that kind of fact-finding. So it's kind of a compromise.
Just for clarification, is the idea for pressing forward this fall with the possible goal of making the change in the ball field next summer, or would that still be two summers away? I wonder what the, the practical advantages between September meeting versus a May meeting next year, like in terms of, does that change us back construction seasons? Because I do agree with the consolidation, I think now we're just figuring out timing, right?
The sooner we have the meeting, the more options in my mind we have for implementation of at least the field, so that if we were to have the meeting this fall, we could, we could make the change to the field if that were the direction we were to go next spring. You know, so that the, the desired outcome could be achieved sooner. Whatever that outcome is.
So there is a couple of options that are out there. One is, I think consolidation is, I think the majority of what I'm hearing council agree to, do here, get in the comments from the public. There are ways to get the public comments, maybe not in person, but other avenues. So I wonder if that seems to be the most, i- is that the direction that we want to give staff, to get comments now, but through different avenues of surveys and such?
Yeah, whatever, whatever seems the most effective way of outreach, given the fact that we're talking about, you know, that, that outreach is going to have to be structured somewhat differently, depending, you know, whether it's the ball field related or playground-related.
Okay. Any concerns doing it electronically? Is that something that staff can do?
We can reach out to, you know, our, our partner stakeholders who run baseball organizations. I can tell you what their feedback's going to be, of course, they're going to want a skinned infield, so we can do that, we can do that electronically. With our park improvements, we really like to be in the neighborhood. We typically would do both, we would have a neighborhood meeting, and we'd send postcards to people to come, come out and visit and talk with us. And then we usually would put something up on social media or on some kind of electronic means to gather input to, with some parks, we even put up, hey, here's concept A, B, and C for playgrounds, tell us what you like and what you don't like. That's where we're going to fall short, because we won't have a consultant to put together some of those concepts for us. We're just going to have to have conversations and then kind of feed in, you know, maybe we can take pictures of playgrounds that we built recently and said, which of these do you, do you like? But I'd still think it's valuable to be in the neighborhood and to talk with folks. Again, the baseball stuff's pretty easy, we can send that out. I could tell you, I, we could, we could send out Happy Hollow and Court Hill and Willow Creek, and do you want them grass or skinned? The baseball folks are going to want them all, dirt. But we'll get that feedback and present it to you.
Well, well, my, my focus is more on Happy Hollow, Jeff. I mean, I, I, you know, there are these other recreational fields, which in my view are another subject matter, partly because not all those fields are the equivalent of Happy Hollow. So, I mean, if you want to, if you want to make that, include that in the outreach, that's fine, but my main concern is, is the question of Happy Hollow.
I think the challenge that we have, that when we discussed this two years ago, and I spoke with John earlier today, my recollection of kind of what we might revisit was, was different. But I think for this question, I don't want people to be led to believe, like if we ask the baseball, you know, certain baseball team, for example, which would you prefer? I don't want them to assume that if they say we'd prefer dirt, that then the council is going to say, yes, that's what we're doing, and we're doing it next year, we're doing it this year, or something like that. So just however the input process happens, I want to be careful that it's not representing to folks that there'll be a particular outcome necessarily, because I think, you know, for myself, and I, at the time, to be transparent, right, I said, I think we should keep it grass, and based on the input of, of the staff and the use that we were getting at the time, I would be interested in knowing how it's, you know, been used since then. We got some of that information in our, in our packet, but I just don't want the question of collecting input to kind of dictate one outcome or another, because I think we hear that a lot in our public comment as of, oh, we, you know, there were a number of people with comments that wanted this, but then that's not the guaranteed outcome. So however we structure it, as long as that message is, is clear.
I do think it's going to be very important to go in the community just to make sure that everyone has that optimal opportunity to come and speak. So if that means, you know, because staff does have a lot of things on their play, I mean, I, I think we all know that. So if that does mean that we need to, you know, you know, collapse it into next year, then we, I, I think the council intent is that that will take place. And we're discussing it now, even though, you know, we didn't have that foresight to even pre-plan this conversation with, with putting this on staff's agenda, you know? So, so I guess that, so where we are now, we know that the majority of council has said, you know, kind of collapsed them together, we want it in the neighborhood. So that does kind of land us at the opportunity of doing it next year, from what I can-
Doing it next year?
Of, of having the meeting next year, of, of having the, the community come out and have the discussion next year.
Next, next year.
I was, that's not what I was advocating for.
Okay.
We can do it this year.
You can do it this year.
We'll combine them, I think the process will suffer a little bit, especially on the playground side, because we won't have somebody there with us. But we'll have the meeting this year, we'll look at the party in the park or the rec and roll schedules, if we're going to hit Happy Hollow at a timeframe that we can kind of roll it into that event, that's probably what we'll do. If for some reason the timeline doesn't work, we'll, we'll schedule a special meeting out there with the neighborhood, and then we'll develop some electronic input process for our T-ball and Little Hawks and our various age ranges for, for baseball, and see what the stakeholders would like to see out there, and probably reach out to softball groups too, and see what they have to say.
All right, is that-
I think we'll have to keep in mind, if, if there's a desire to try to move the project up next year, we're going to have to move the $175,000 up into our budget next year. Otherwise, again, there could be a, a two-year gap before, from the time we have the discussion to the actual time in which the improvements are pursued.
But we probably need to be clear with people when we're getting their input, that we're, that we're getting the input now, we're not quite sure yet when implementation will be.
And that was kind of the gist of my question, like, even if we had a meeting this fall and we wanted to make the change, and we, and the consensus was for a change, does that really speed up the process in practicality with the funding and the, could we really actually make the change next summer, or would we have to do it in two years anyway? I mean, there's, are we gaining what we think we're gaining from that? I, I'm new, so I'm going to go ahead and play that card again, that could, does that, does it, does that work like that, or?
So the staff can convert the infield on our own. I think if, if the project stayed together, we'd probably roll that, my guess is, we'd probably roll that into one bid, and we'd just have the contractor also do that. But if the community and council desires that we change the ball field over again, we can do that with our staff, it's just prioritizing their time and, and our operational resources to make that conversion. That could happen this year, or it could happen early next year, with our own kind of manpower and, and resources.
So it sounds like we have, will direct staff to do something this summer yet, or when it, when it works out?
Yeah, we'll get it put together.
All right. Any other item on this topic?
You know, this packet, I think we have to look at item number five, IP5, from the, the letter from the Center for Worker Justice on the wage theft proposal.
I don't know if, is, is there a staff that can give us kind of a just brief?
Well, I think a high, high-level summary, when you directed staff to draft an agreement with the Center for Worker Justice, I believe the Center for Worker Justice was under the understanding that they were going to be able to go back to the county and say, hey, look, all the cities are on board, give us some additional money. And when they went there, the county said, no, all of our ARPA funds have now been scheduled, and there, there's, there's no extra money there. So that's, they were hoping for an additional $33,000 from the county. And now, since the county told them they no longer have those funds, the council's coming back and asking for the city to pick up that full $33,000 in addition to what you had committed earlier. The, you know, staff has already been working on an, an ARPA agreement to, to fund what you had previously talked about. We do want to point out that the county's commitment for this is a three-year commitment. So I believe Corville, North Liberty, we're all, we're both five years. If we are to use ARPA funds for this, we can't allow expenditure, all expenditures have to take place before 2026, so we really don't even have five years to, to go from today and fully fund five years unless you want to use local funds to supplement the ARPA funds. So I think the question to, to council is, do you want to increase your commitment that you already made, that ask is $33,000? And if so, it's, and it's still, still intends to be a five-year program, I think you just have to understand that we're going to use some ARPA funds when we can, and then we're going to have to transition to, to local funds, you know, in those out years. Otherwise, we can stay with our plan, and we probably won't get a full five-year commitment to the CWJ through ARPA, but we'll get pretty close, and we'll go as, as far as we reasonably can with them.
Is it my understanding that the entire $322,000 for this position, that there is no, all this is from municipalities? There is no monies that have been budgeted for the organization itself to submit? And I, I mean, I see the county doing $130,000, the city of Corville committing $40,000, and North Liberty at $35,000. Currently, we're at $85,000, and we're being asked, you know, again, to do that $33,000. So one thing I would say is that I think this is a great program that the CWJ has had and have been supporting individuals within our communities for years, and I think that the work is extremely important. I do have pause when it comes down to solely asking entities to fully support a program. And so, and I would also point out that CWJ is a legacy agency, which is, or, or they've been, you know, promoted to be a legacy agency, which would be great. Part of their operations, although we know CWJ has been doing a lot of phenomenal work beyond chess with workers, I think they have really supported the council and some of our ARPA needs, when individuals needed support, getting signed up for some of the programs when it comes down to eviction prevention. I think they, you know, have done a lot. So this is not a knock against the CWJ, this is me saying, you know, it gives me pause that we have an agency that, you know, will be, you know, be getting funding from the, from the city. So some of the $33,000, certainly, that can come other ways to the city through a request. So I don't think that, because the city is going to continue to make sure that we're invested into this agency. So for me, right now, I think the $85,000 commitment is great, the majority of this council supported that, and I, I really believe this is a great program. The $85,000 will get them where they, will get them strongly down the road. But when it comes down to seeing a program that has zero funding from an agency, that gives me pause.
I had similar thoughts, Mayor, although I hadn't kind of articulated it that in my mind, I was just thinking of other funding opportunities, not necessarily, you know, the, the agency coming forward and saying, we have so much towards this program and we just need your support, which I think is very often what we see, and I think as a government, that gives us, you know, additional confidence in the success of a program. I was also just thinking about other funding opportunities in the form of grants, you know, whether it's the Community Foundation or United Way, you know, there's a, a number of other places in the community that I think may be able to assist in kind of filling that last gap. My comfort level, especially given our, some of the strategic plan discussion, understanding where budget's going to be yet, that sort of thing, is to stick with our commitment on the $85,000, knowing that they have other opportunities for funding, not just this program, but other programs through the CBPG process, the social justice racial equity grants, as well as other community partners who provide grant funding.
This, this program that CWJ, it, it's unique to the state, and we have to keep that in mind, and they have done great work. And I was shocked at the amount of wage theft that is out there statewide, and particularly in our community, and I think a large portion of the cases they have followed so far have come from, from our community, which I would think that we, as, as Iowa City, should put more money into it. And I think that they've, they would like to know now, I mean, just like you kind of would like to know if you're going to buy a house, what's your budget five, five years down the line, are you still going to be able to afford this? As I said, this is a very unique portion of the jobs and things that the Center for Worker Justice does, and this is what they're requesting it for, is just this unique portion, because it is a very real problem. And I am for, if, if, I, I'm glad, Jeff, that you pointed that out, because I hadn't even thought about that, that it has to be spent by 2026, and maybe CWJ didn't realize that either, but, I mean, if there's- And maybe CWJ didn't realize that either, but, I mean, if there's some way that we can help them out with those last couple of years or year and a half, I would be in favor of doing that and helping them out with this.
I think it's important to remember, too, that we're talking about raising this to something that's spread out, the annual cost being, you know, $23,600, which in terms of, you know, the size of the hit on our budget, it's, it's not that big of a percentage in terms of, on our end of things, but it can make a big impact for workers and for this position. You know, I think it's unfortunate that the, the timing, I can appreciate the difficulties of trying to work out the timing using multiple agencies, and it sounds like the timing just fell through for CWJ in terms of they had a plan to have all this funding and it went away before they got it back around to the county. But I can appreciate the difficulty of trying to juggle all these different entities. And certainly, CWJ and Director Sully did go out and talk to these different groups and made a good effort. You know, I think, I think would have been nice to know ahead of time, but I can see why that wasn't knowledge that anybody had ahead of time for the original ask. I think I would still be okay with supporting this increase, but I can definitely see why there's, you know, maybe, maybe, I'm sensing a little bit of frustration, but I think it's understandable because of the circumstances. And again, we're still talking about a fairly small amount of money, which could be a huge payout from the city. It could be a huge payout for our community and keep dollars flowing in our community and help, you know, the people that are trying to get affordable housing and everything else. So, I still think it's worth it to support this and even to support this new ask for an increase.
Jeff, what, how far along is staff on getting this rolled up with the original understanding? And what, what has to happen to unroll it and start, and do it again?
We were hoping to get it on your July, or I'm sorry, your June agenda, but there's some complications we have to work out. So, you know, county's using ARPA funds, we're using ARPA funds. The county's doing theirs over three years, and it was supposed to be $15,000 for this fiscal year and then 60 for the next two fiscal years. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but 60, a $60,000 contribution from the county pretty much covers one year of this entire position. And you can't duplicate benefits with federal dollars. So, we can't pay the CWJ our, you know, annual amount when the county's already using federal dollars to pay the salary for that year. So, what happens is there's a timing issue that we're going to have to work out with all the funding entities. And I don't know at this point if Corvillo and North Liberty are using their ARPA dollars, but what we might find is that we have more than enough, we've got more funding than we can use in these early years. And I'm sure what the county did is they front-loaded it in three years because they don't want to run into a situation where they're using ARPA money late into '25 or '26. But these last, last couple of years are going to be a tricky puzzle to figure out, and that's probably what we have to do. We have to figure that out with the CWJ and the other funding partners before we can come back to you. So, possibly your second meeting in June, maybe July, depending on how that all comes together.
Out of curiosity, I understand that we, as the entity that receive the ARPA funds, have a, have to spend it by a certain date, but do the agencies to which we give the money have to spend it by that same date on those programs? Is that, is a commitment that follows down the chain?
Yeah, so it's actually, we have to commit by '24, they have to, all funds have to be spent by '26. So, we'll be fine committing those funds, but again, we can't, if the county's paying $60,000 in year one and the position's only $60,000, we can't provide ours on top of that. We have to wait.
It's basically sort of staggered.
Yeah, we're going to have.
Throughout.
Yeah, I think in an ideal world, we all just fund a percentage of that. But it's not always an ideal world. We have to kind of figure that piece out. So, that's probably the holdup on the contract, but the agreement itself or the contract is probably a pretty straightforward document. It's just that multiple funding partners and the use of federal dollars is complicating.
I don't know when the, you know, when their budget starts. Most budgets, you know, we're used to that July 1. So, I think council has to keep that in mind, that if we, you know, want to commit to something and get something, you know, to a certain degree, we have to just keep that July, I don't know what their budget year is. It sounds like they'll have coverage no matter what.
Yeah, I would think that if they wanted to start moving on a hiring process, there's enough commitment from enough people. I mean, I'm guessing, I don't know that, but, but I don't know that we'd be stopping them or holding them up for months if we take till, you know, two or three meetings from now to get all this hammered out. Would be my, again, would be my guess.
Well, devil's advocate here also, as I understand it, I know that this is a new position, a unique position, but one that they're hoping to be have, that it's, it's not a finite position. I mean, it is as far as what the budget is showing us, but I'm assuming that in its own way, it's sort of a precursor of what would hopefully be a sustainable salaried position, right, after these five years. So, I guess I'm wondering if there's something to be said that, again, they have, the position is paid for, for the first several years out of what exists right now, which would also allow for an opportunity for CWJ to say, hey, come join in, come buy in with the municipalities. I mean, that's actually oftentimes, it has been used to good effect in some other local efforts to say, the city has kicked in, the least that, you know, can be done is, you know, wouldn't you like to come with us, right? And it helps breed more success for an entity and build stronger relationships within the, you know, the, the community with different funding partners. So, I'm wondering if there is, on the one hand, I recognize, as you say, Pauline, you want to know what your budget is so that you can plan for it accordingly, and I don't fault that one bit. But I'm also wondering, with $33,000 spread over, well, actually, it would be four years starting not even this year, it'd be in advance, that they would be able to, as Mayor had said, fundraise perhaps that amount themselves and work within the community to help strengthen those bonds. I realize on the one hand, like Sean had said, you know, spread over time, this is a small portion of money in our budget and yet it would make a difference to CWJ. I'm just mindful of the fact that they are not the only agency that is going to be needing ARPA funds, and there may well be somebody who could use that $33,000. I'm just trying to sort of scope it all out. You all know me well enough that I'm kind of processing out loud here.
I do have a question for you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Or maybe even for staff, because I heard that $85,000 being, you know, kind of a challenge to be spent by 2026 with the county's commitment. To me, it seemed like maybe we need to, you know, direct staff to go back to CWJ and ask, you know, how, you know, find out from the county how they're going to spend their money, find out, you know, where our money, our $85,000 fits in there. Because if they're maxed out, then, you know, our ARPA funds are, you know, could be a mute point beyond the $85,000. So, that would be my suggestion at this point, is that we, I mean, if, we can certainly give direction to do additional funds if we should desire, but it almost sounds like if two years, because it'll be a four-year before it has to be spent, if three of those years are already somewhat committed by the county, and we're just talking four years, we're, our $85, $85,000 is going to be almost already spent. So, I think it, you know, if council would agree, maybe we could, you know, go back, have him, have staff go back to CWJ and try to figure out those details, because then the ask may not be for our ARPA funds. And then I think that's a totally different conversation. And again, I mean, this is an agency that is, you know, has been promoted, suggested for it being a legacy agency. None of the other communities have the robust programs that the city of Iowa City has. So, I don't know if council would be in agreement, because I think we don't know how the $85,000 is going to be spent right now.
I mean, I would be in agreement in having, in going back to CWJ, given how the county funds are being front-loaded, to actually see how the numbers are going to break down before we have to make, before we have to make a decision on this, because right now we just don't know what we can.
I would agree.
What we can do with ARPA funds.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, you know, this wage theft concept whole, and if, if they need additional funding from the city, from Iowa City, I'm supportive of that, but it does seem it would be helpful to have, at this point, some clarification as to how these funds will be expended over the five-year period.
All right. It sounds like the majority of council is going to direct staff to bring us more information, just figure out, you know, how does our money and the county money, ARPA funds fit in this? Anything else on June 2nd? I'm going to bring up USG. Yes, I'm going to welcome them right now, so the University of Iowa Student Governments for their updates, and welcome.
Hi, council. Keaton, would you be willing to say the first one?
Yes. Hi, my name's Keaton. I'm the deputy city liaison for USG. And the first item on our announcements is the Board of Regents meeting approved the Iowa Center for School Mental Health and UI College of Education, which is a partnership between Iowa Department of Education and the university to address the state's mental health problems.
Additionally, on behalf of USG, Keaton and I would like to extend our heartbrokenness to hear about the tragic shooting that resulted in the deaths of two Iowa State University students, Vivian Flores and Eden Maria Monteng, this past Thursday. We encourage everyone or anyone affected by this news to utilize the University of Iowa's counseling services. If you or a loved one would benefit from this assistance, please call or text the UIowa Support and Crisis Line, 844-461-5420. That's 844-461-5420. And that's all of our announcements today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees?
I had our monthly EC-COG meeting, I guess it was more than a week ago now, and looking for that InVision East Central Iowa report coming out, I believe in July is what they're pegging now, which was referenced in our, the presentation from ICANN, but looking forward to seeing that.
And it sounds like it's going to align, have some similarities in alignment with Better Together 2030.
What case?
Great, great. All right. Any other updates?
General updates?
That'd be after council meeting. All right, we are adjourned until?
May I, may I interrupt, just to do a plug?
Yes.
Just a good citizen plug, that primary day tomorrow is tomorrow, and that everyone should get out and vote, take part. And if you do not know where your precinct is, because some of them have changed, we have expanded precincts, you can find that out on the iowa.gov site. It's sos.iowa.gov backslash elections, backslash footer reg, polling place. If you just sort of comb through the radio button, then the options, you'll be able to find your polling place. And it's just, it's going to take you no time at all, and it's a wonderful thing to do, and it's going to help shape what's going to happen in November, so.
I appreciate you sharing that, because it is kind of some new landfill for people to go vote, and some things have changed. So, tomorrow's voting day, so we encourage people to go vote. If nothing else, for the good of the cause, we will be adjourned until 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM. All right, it is 6:00 PM, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is June 6th, 2022, and it is just after 6:00 PM, and I'm going to start with roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Fergus?
Here.
Farmson?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, welcome again back, councilors, and welcome to everyone that is here in person, and those that are looking through social media. I wanted to start with 2A, which are proclamations, and 2A is going to be Juneteenth, National Freedom Day. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring persons enslaved in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866, with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings, some communities purchased land for Juneteenth celebrations, such as Emancipation Park in Houston, Texas, and as freed families immigrated from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carry the Juneteenth celebration with them. And whereas Juneteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans, and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th," and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas, beginning in 2022, the city of Iowa City officially recognized Juneteenth as a city holiday. And whereas, Juneteenth reflects our community's deep belief in liberty and equality for all individuals. And whereas, Juneteenth celebrates the strength and resolve of African-Americans throughout history, and is an opportunity to honor African-American culture, art, history, and achievement, as all benefit from a greater understanding and appreciation of the experiences of others. And whereas, the city of Iowa City, municipalities within Johnson County, Black Voices Project, and many other organizations are hosting free public events to commemorate Juneteenth. Details regarding all events can be found on the city of Iowa City website. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim and recognize Juneteenth, 2022, as Juneteenth, National Freedom Day, in Iowa City, and encourage community members to participate in the commemorative events. And to accept this award is going to be Siri, Supervisor Roy Sand Porter, and Tracy John Sargent, so please come up.
I want to begin by thanking Mayor Bruce Teague and our city council for affirming and directly recognizing through a proclamation, the profound weight and power of this historical day, Juneteenth, June 19th, 1865. I would be remiss if I did not directly address the reality that with my identity as a white American comes both the invaluable privilege of safety when I raise my voice for injustice, and therefore also the enormous responsibility to actively work towards eradicating the systemic racism that in many ways still exists in our society 157 years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. With this understanding of my identity and of the critical responsibility that follows, I am honored to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. I take a moment of personal privilege, however, to share of my own, a few of my own private thoughts. For those of you who don't know me, I am a public school teacher who recognizes that as humans, our earliest conversations on topics as deeply troubling and complex as our nation's history of slavery are what we bear deep within us as we grow up to form relationships and craft the opinions on which we ultimately act. And the reality is that I am speaking to you in a time when the freedom of educators to teach historical truth is actively eroding, as legislative restrictions pile on. And the result, many teachers who feel forced to abstain from teaching basic historical truths that can and should induce feelings of horror and embarrassment. Truths that should raise questions about early Americans' motivations, and questions about just how much progress we have made as a nation when we consider the structures of oppression that are so fiercely protected today. James Baldwin said, "I don't know what most white people feel. I can only conclude what they feel from the state of their institutions." I don't know if the Board of Education hates black people, but I know the textbooks they give my children to read and the schools we have to go to." End quote. As a teacher, I fear intensely this dwindling freedom to teach truth in our education institutions, to answer questions with truth, and to help students navigate their resulting emotions that are both painful, both a painful consequence of understanding truth, but also the foundation for motivated work towards seeking and treating each other as equals. I do find this deeply unsettling. But this is why I also feel immense gratitude towards our mayor and towards our city council, the leaders of our community who have chosen to celebrate, remember, learn from this historical truth. Juneteenth not only commemorates the past, but also calls us into action today. This is why we must understand the importance of our city's choice to enthusiastically celebrate this day of independence, fiercely fight to achieve the equality that should have been delivered on June 19th, 157 years ago. delivered on June 19th, 157 years ago, and why we must refuse to teach anything but historical truth so that all of our children can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Roy San Porter, Supervisor for Johnson County. I just want to say thank you for the proclamation. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You all know, we as black people know that we are very excited about Juneteenth being, Iowa City making it a holiday here in the city as well as Johnson County, so for that, for that, for us, that's huge. We have made some strides in our county, in our cities. We have a black mayor. We have had a black mayor pro temp, a black county supervisor, as well as North Liberty having a black lady, Rakeisha Harrington, on the City Council. And we've come so far. I've been in this county for 33 years now. And where I know where we come from and I know where we're going, I just want to thank everybody for the support that we do receive. I do want to tell you that this year's celebration for Juneteenth will be right outside these doors on this street, blocked off 14 East Washington Street. We are going to celebrate Juneteenth. It will be our biggest Juneteenth. There will be food, bouncy houses, vendors, and we also will have a fashion show. We will have some talent and entertainment, DJ, comedian, and that is at 5:00 PM on June 17th. We ask that the city come out. We ask that you come and support. We ask that you not only support us from the hours of 5:00 to 9:00, but on the Pad Mall, we're going to bring a band from Chicago called The New Shining Star, who do a tribute to Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. It's going to be really nice, so we ask that you come out. Please tell others. And on Saturday, I'll let, he'll come up here and tell you about his event on Saturday, but there's also two programs on Saturday for Juneteenth. We are taking Juneteenth to the neighborhoods. It will be in Iowa City and it will be in Corville. People say, "Why are you doing that?" Because sometimes people don't have transportation to get out and go, so we're going into the community. So the community event for Corville will be from 11:00 to 4:00, and it's at the Morrison Tea Park. Please come out, same thing. We will have food, bouncy houses. There's going to be a Juneteenth play, so we ask that you come out and support as well. So if you can't get to Iowa City and you live in Corville, come to either one of them. It's going to be lots of events going on, so thank you.
Tracy, you want to come up?
Hi, my name is Tracy Sargent. I am the founder and executive director of the Multicultural Development Center of Iowa. I really appreciate this. This is my first year of officially being on the planning committee, and I want to recognize about 60 individuals that came together to make this happen. Obviously, I'm not going to list all of their names, but I want to make sure that people recognize that there's a lot of people behind the scenes that are making this happen. The event will take place on Saturday, June 18th, at Mercer Park from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. So as Roy San mentioned, there's going to be food and bouncy houses. My organization will be there to encourage kids to look at STEM as possible career and degree pathways. We'll have a financial literacy there as well. Iowa City Public Library will have their mobile bookmobile there as well. So plenty to do to celebrate and become educated on what Juneteenth is. And of course, we have some T-shirts that we're going to be giving away that I am especially proud of. I designed those this year, and I think it's a beautiful design that we can wear throughout the year to remind us of this important holiday. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you. Really appreciate it. All right, we are on to our next proclamation, 2B, which is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer or questioning, intersex, and asexual, people come from all walks of life and all racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds. And whereas LGBTQIA persons are family members, friends, coworkers, and community members. And whereas, the City of Iowa City is committed to upholding diversity, social justice, equity, mutual respect, and safety for all who live, work, do business, and visit or enjoy this community. And whereas, the City of Iowa City has been recognized by the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equity Index for the past seven years for its outstanding support of LGBTQIA individuals in public policy, services, and leadership. And whereas, the City of Iowa City will show that commitment and support by offering programming, free yard signs, flying pride flags at City Hall, and City Park Pool from June 1 through June 30, enlightening the Public Works Building and Pad Mall stage in rainbow pride colors. Whereas, with the goal of coming together in person at last, Iowa City Pride, www.iowacitypride.org backslash, will hold its citywide pride celebration on June 18th, 2022. Now therefore, I, Mayor Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 to be LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And accepting this proclamation is our Iowa City Pride interim president, Jewel Amis.
A little short, I need to bring this down. Thank you all for this. Hopefully someday, we won't be standing here having to proclaim anything. It'll just be part of everyday culture, and we don't have an event, we just, you know, forget about it. That's, you know, reality is hopefully sooner than later. So it sounds like June 18th is the place to be in Iowa City, just down here for these guys, and then go up the street for us. We're going to party till 10 o'clock late, and our parade's at noon, so you're just going to have to go back and forth as much as you can all day long and enjoy as much as you can that whole weekend. We've got lots of events the week of to celebrate our accomplishments. So if you go to Iowa City Pride on Facebook, we have our events listed there. And I'd just like to invite everybody to come and enjoy with us, and we're there to build bridges and make Iowa City as friendly as possible. So I appreciate this. Thanks.
Thank you. Item number three through seven is our consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Fergus.
Second, Taylor.
All right. Would anyone from the public like to address topics that are in the consent calendar? If so, please come to the podium. I will let people know that at the back of the room, there is, there are little stickers that you can pre-write your name and fill it out. But when you do come to the podium, either place your sticker there or write your information there. Anyone on, on the, that is online, would like to address this topic, please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. All right. And I'm assuming there is no one from the public that want to address this topic? All right. We're going to move to council discussion. Roll call, please.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, absolutely.
So the one thing that I would note is that inflation is hitting the city, and we see that in one of the items that we're approving here, which is the Rochester Street Reconstruction. So as we look to our budget and the future, we need to be, we're going to need to be mindful that not, that inflation is at the grocery stores, everybody else, it's also hitting our projects.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number eight, and this is an opportunity for its community comment. And this is an opportunity from those in the community that want to come and make a comment on any item that is not on our agenda, so now would be the time to do that. Welcome. And if you're online, please raise your hand as well.
Good evening. My name is Joe Riley with the Iowa City Downtown District, Iowa City. Thank you, Mayor Teague and Council, for having public comment. I've come here on behalf of the Iowa City Downtown District Restaurants, asking and reminding the City Council to take up reviewing the city's current patio sidewalk cafe permit fees and the public right of way as a part of our strategic, as a part of your strategic planning. We do acknowledge that there has been financial impacts caused by inflation in both the public and private sector. We are also grateful for the waiver of these fees to our businesses as most recently as 2021, 2020, as well as Washington Street during its renovation, Pad Mall during its renovation, and soon to come, to our understanding, the Dubuque Street renovation businesses will also receive a waiver. But we at the Iowa City Downtown District are asking for something that is more long-term. Earlier this year, the Iowa City Downtown District filed a public records request on the revenue collected from these permit fees over the last decade. We learned the total annual revenue collected on these permitting fees has been as low as $49,000 and as high as $75,000. We do acknowledge that the anticipated city budgetary constraints coming in the next couple of fiscal years, and we also want to pose a few questions. If this is a vital revenue line item to the city's general fund, can it withstand fluctuations year to year like this? Wouldn't now, during the strategic planning process, be the time to shore up revenue line items and have sources that are consistent year over year? If large waivers for our businesses have been workable five out of the last 10 years, wouldn't that point to some flexibility in the program that could be an easy win for businesses, council, and downtown? At the very least, Iowa City Downtown District is asking the council to take up this discussion on their agenda and make the determination, can the city withstand a permanent reduced revenue from the sidewalk cafe patio fees in the public right of way as a way to help these businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll invite anyone up that want to talk about any item that is not on the agenda. And also, there's a timer up front for anyone. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Mira Malarcon Avila, and I'm here on behalf of Escucha Mi Voz. And we want to talk about what happened with the Johnson County Direct Assistant Program. And I just want to give you some information. So from May 24 to, sorry, April 24 to May 27, when the applications was open, Escucha Mi Voz helped more than 630 applicants to fill up their applications. About, I'm sorry, I have to take this because I cannot read. About, from, from that number, we also have contacted another 400 people, and unfortunately, they was not able to apply. And the reason of that, there was several reasons, but the first thing that we find out, we, many of them, they could not have a valid identification. If you are aware, many of the councils are still closed, still in pandemic. So many people have not been able to have their identification, see their countries in the past two years. Also, the other, the big issue was to be able to prove their income despite the Johnson County was very helpful by providing a self-certification to they was able to give it to their employers, a letter for them to sign. Many of these employers did not want to sign these letters. So we know for sure we have more than 400 people that was not able to apply because a combination of all these things. The other big issue that we find out was the residency. As you already, already know, many people who leave several peoples in one house, all the bills only come in the name of one person, but that is some of the issues that we encounter. From all that applications that we did, we was able to help a lot of immigrants, refugees, and 70% of them belongs to the Iowa City, city. So we are asking the city to please ask the Johnson County, not just for the Direct Assistant Program, but for the General Assistant, to reconsider, to take down some of the barriers. So many people who doesn't even have a house, they're homeless, can apply for all the Direct Assistant that they can provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to translate for Ninoska.
Great, thanks. Welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ninosca Campos y soy miembro de Escucha Mi Voz.
Hello, my name is Ninosca Campos, and I'm a member of Escucha Mi Voz.
Le voy a explicar un poco de lo que fue la asistencia general del programa de Johnson County con las personas que aplicaron con Escucha Mi Voz.
I'm going to let you know a little bit of what Escucha Mi Voz did by helping people with the Direct Assistant Program.
Donde ustedes aprobaron un millón y medio de dólares para ayudarle a los trabajadores.
Since you guys provide 1.5 millions to give you for this program.
De parte de Escucha Mi Voz contactamos a 1,036 personas inmigrantes.
Escucha Mi Voz contact 1,000, about 1,100 people, immigrants.
Ayudamos a aplicar 631 personas porque 400 personas no llenaban todos los requisitos establecidos que pedía el condado.
We helped around 635 people because 400 people was not able to apply for the program.
El condado dice que podría rechazar muchas solicitudes porque las personas no llenan todos los requisitos.
The county might be able to reject many of these applications because they don't have all the requirements.
Porque tienen el papeleo incompleto.
Because the paperwork is not complete.
No queremos el método lotería.
We still don't like the lottery, the lottery program.
Estoy aquí para pedirle a la ciudad que haga todo lo posible.
We are, we're here to ask the city to do your best work.
Y lo que esté a su alcance para que se acepten las 2,600 solicitudes de las personas que aplicaron.
To help us to, to be able to provide the 2,560 people who applied to the program.
Y que le pidan al condado que por favor hagan lo correcto.
And to please ask the Johnson County to help us with this.
Ya que uno de los retos ante las personas cuando llenaban su solicitud fue la autocertificación a que las personas que les pagan en efectivo.
So one of the big challenges that we have was the self-certification for all the people who receive income in cash and they are contract workers.
Sus jefes no querían firmar ni firmaron las cartas de autocertificaciones. Ellos tuvieron que firmar por sí solos.
Their bosses didn't want to sign up, so they have to sign by themselves as self-employers.
Entonces que tomen ese detalle en cuenta, gracias.
So we want they take that in count. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I see Brian Williams online. Welcome.
Hey, thank you for addressing me. My name is Brian Williams. I currently stay in Iowa City. I have concerns about any resolutions concerning the sale and consumption of alcohol on city property. Let me be clear, I am not against alcohol consumption. Whoa, not sure what's going on here. Okay, has my comment started?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brian Williams. I currently stay in Iowa City. I have concerns about any resolutions concerning the sale and consumption of alcohol on city property. Let me be clear, I'm not against alcohol consumption. I'm sure some of you enjoy consuming alcohol from time to time. Today, I had a long day at work, so I am currently consuming some alcohol myself. However, alcohol sometimes does funny things to people. Sometimes when people consume alcohol, they become agitated or disruptive. These usually minor, mild disruptions to civil society sometimes invite police intervention. So just this morning, I watched a video filmed in our city on June 3rd, just three days ago. This video shows a young woman, by my estimation approximately 110 pounds, drunken, handcuffed, and therefore defenseless, being punched repeatedly by a very large Iowa City police officer. Again, I am not against alcohol consumption in general. I do, however, have concerns that if you increase the availability of alcohol in public, that we're going to see more of these extrajudicial beatings of women by the brave men on your police. police force. I would hate for your city to become known as the quote-unquote "that place where big tough policemen repeatedly punch tiny drunken defenseless women." That would be a very unfortunate reputation to acquire, and so I believe you should take some proactive measures before increasing the sale of beer and wine in public areas in our city. To start, I would offer the suggestion that you teach your heroic policemen that it's generally seen as bad to repeatedly punch tiny drunken defenseless women, especially in public areas where citizens are increasingly filming police encounters. You could, for example, create a PowerPoint with slides titled something along the lines of, "When you repeatedly punch tiny drunken defenseless women, people tend to get angry and bother us with phone calls, social media comments, and public comments at city council meetings." Furthermore, I have concerns that if we continue to see your gallant LEOs repeatedly punching tiny drunken defenseless women, eventually, other drunken citizens might get fed up and intervene in these policing actions. It might even get to the point where drunken onlookers decide enough is enough and collectively bum rush via arresting slash punching officers to prevent harm to the tiny defense, defenseless drunken women. That would be bad. For these reasons, I firmly believe that you should delay the increased implementation of beer and wine sales on public land in Iowa City. I urge you to train your anabolic steroid-riddled police force to not repeatedly punch drunken defenseless tiny women, but to instead realize that they're in a vulnerable state and deserve help from the people that are sworn to protect them, even if they're allegedly headbutting windows when the heroic meathead cops make initial contact. If you find that you cannot persuade your warrior cops to stop repeatedly punching drunken defenseless tiny women, you could instead perhaps convince them to start up.
Thank you. Anyone else and like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council. I'm here to talk about the beating which occurred last weekend on June 3rd, which, I mean, it, it's weird how things work out that two years to the night that peaceful demonstrators were assaulted by ICPD officers, another assault of someone who wasn't even doing anything to officers occurred. And I say that because before I, I drove to this, this meeting, and before I came in, I watched the body cam footage, which was just released, and that, that messed me up a lot because it, it triggered a lot within me because it's clear from the footage that all that woman did before she was handcuffed, because the video is 14 minutes, within a minute, she is handcuffed by an officer. She's, and you know what led up to her being handcuffed? She's sitting away, with her body away from the officer like this, just standing there for several moments before the officer, someone who is one of Jeffrey, through, city manager Jeff Ruin's thugs, slaps handcuffs on her. And, I mean, it's clear that the only reason they did that, that all of the force that's used within this video, because I actually, I only watched four minutes of it because it bothered me so much, but it's clear that they, they used, they handcuffed her, they used force on her. Everything that they did that violated her rights as a human being was because they were irritated at her. They just saw some defenseless drunk girl, and they needed to, I, prove something to themselves, I don't know. But it's clear that they, what they did to her was because they were annoyed by her. I'm somebody that annoys police. I was going to come here tonight and be like, yeah, last meeting when I held up a sign between, behind the police chief with him as a clown, I was going to apologize for that. I'm not apologizing for that anymore because he's a fucking clown. And it's honestly the fact that that's the kind of department that he leads? I'm sorry. Why, why is this acceptable for an officer to powd a girl like that in her head? Why is that acceptable? That's Jeff Ruin policing. Is that okay with you all? That little girl, like, that young women are beaten by someone who's two, three times their size? Is that the kind of city that you want? I mean, we've been at this for two years. It's been over two years since the uprising in 2020 happened. We're no different. We're no different at all. Jeff Ruin is, came in and was like, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help the police department? We are no better. ICPD are thugs, and the fact that this is the, the mindset that goes throughout the department, it's sickening. Y'all need to do something because they could be your kids.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, I flipped you off because the last meeting, you read a proclamation declaring how great ICPD was.
Please state your name.
You know what my name is. My name is Noah. And, yes. Anyways, so, I started at that because last meeting, you started saying, "ICPD is such a great community." So, fuck. I also watched the video before this meeting. The body cam, I already watched the video. next time a defenseless woman gets, gets attacked by cops, I hope the cops get them robbed. I hope, I, I hope your cops get fucking beat like that. Next time they start beating defenseless handcuffed woman. Handcuffed, defenseless anybody, I hope the citizens rise up and show the cops who actually runs the city and it's not the fucking cops. And you need to actually control your damn cops. You need to defund your damn cops. You need to actually make a community safe, because the cops clearly aren't making a community safe. The cops don't, they don't, there's no, there is no attempt at de-escalation that. They start off, just straight up walk to them and just, just start handcuffing this woman, and what the hell is she also do? She's being attacked violently, violently arrested, not even say a damn word to her, they just grab her. And you're like, oh, whoa, oh, we got kicked, oh, no! We got kicked because we were violently attacking this person, just dragged her to the ground, and she had the audacity to try to defend herself from a bunch of overpowered, oversized thugs that were attacking her, and she was, didn't want to be attacked by them, and then decides to keep doing that. You should be damn ashamed of yourselves. That last meeting that you came out here with the proclamation saying that ICPD makes the community safe, and they help protect us, and they defend the defenseless, when we've all seen the video of them beating the defenseless people in the cop cars. And then having audacity to charge them the felony with up to 11 years of prison, you should have the audacity to not want to be beaten by cops. Be ashamed of yourselves and actually like, do something to change it. It's like dancing, it's been two years now, and it's not last to me, that was, that was literally two years to date that they gassed us. The exact same time that they were gassing us, when that ambulance, that night that they gassed us, when the ambulance was coming, you can see them still launching tear canisters when the ambulance was right there. That's how much they care about the safety of the community. When they caused someone to have an attack that they need an ambulance, when the ambulance was there, they still kept launching canisters of gas and laughing, it's like, ha, let them eat gas. It's appalling. And really, obviously makes me, it just should make everyone upset. Because I was just plainly wrong.
Thank you. Welcome, Taylor, online.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Hi. So first of all, I want to speak for, I want to speak on behalf of someone else, and then I'm going to speak for myself. I'm going to speak for someone who wanted to be heard tonight, but can't speak to you because they are worried that the police will retaliate, so they cannot speak freely. They wanted to convey, as a resident who is a black person in Iowa City, they want to make sure that everyone is seeing this event in light of their own personal experiences as they do every time they see videos or pictures of violence toward black lives. They want to point out that that girl could be your daughter, Negan Alter, in a few years, Janice, your granddaughter, Sean, your kids, people that you know, this could be that, that, their situation, and it is a lot of people's situation, who are not as privileged as many of you. And I want to speak for myself. This is not about this incident only. I, I hope that you feel horrible for the person that this happened to, but I hope that you can't sleep at night because you know that this is the culture you've created and nurtured and ensured is preserved for the last two years and beyond, especially the last two years. You all have worked your asses off to make sure that this survived, this kind of violence. It was just in November that someone was caught on camera, a cop beating someone up while other cops stood around and watched, and what do we see? The same thing happening on the anniversary, the two-year anniversary of your cops teargassing protesters protesting for black lives in Iowa City. What the fuck have you been doing the last two years? What have you been doing except nurturing this? I don't want to hear one single word from you excusing what the cops did because of what this person did, it doesn't matter. Because of the circumstances, of the justification that makes it okay for someone who's paid by the city to do this to someone. It's not acceptable. This woman needed support, and this did not have to happen. And it does happen all the time, and it doesn't wind up on camera. Fuck you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Or a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
Okay, Roy San Porter again, Johnson County Supervisor. Just wanted to give you a little update on the Direct Assistance Program. The Direct Assistance Program closed at 2:00 PM on Friday, May 27th. Just want to let you know that there was 2,596 applications were received by the program's close. Nearly 250 additional applications were received following the program extension. Johnson County staff provided a third application assistance opportunity onsite at the county building, May 26th from 12 to 4:00. The rough breakdown of applications by community shows approximately 1.8,000 applications were submitted by Iowa City residents, approximately 425 applications were submitted by Corville residents, 240 applications submitted by North Liberty residents, 50 applications were from Tiffin, 20 were from Oxford, 15 from Solon, and there were other communities represented with a minimum number. So, just want to let you know as a reminder, these numbers reflect self-reported mailing address, and I want to give us a pat on the back, not just Johnson County, but the city of Iowa City, because we are the only people in the state of Iowa doing anything like this, the Direct Assistance Program to help our people who went through an economic hardship. So I would like to say thank you for what we have done. I also, too, would like to tell you that they have come before you, the Catholic workers, and let you know that there are over 400 people who could not get signatures from their employers. I asked you to ask them why. Why wouldn't an employer give you a sheet of paper stating what you made? If you made too much, then you didn't qualify for the program. So we have to look at all that instead of just saying, give everybody that applied some money. You have to be eligible, and if you were eligible, then you should get money. So that's why I'm here. And I'm just proud to say again that we did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on the council agenda? Please come forth now. I'm going to close the public comment, and we are on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning matters. Nine A, rezoning south of Lehman Avenue and west of Sycamore Greenway. Ordinance conditionally resone approximately 4.7 acres of property located south of Lehman Avenue and west of Sycamore Greenway from interim development, multifamily residential to neighborhood public. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and we're going to invite staff. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As the mayor stated, this is an application for rezoning. It is the area shown here in outline of the bottom of this little flag lot, so the square area is what would be rezoned, the long slender component reaching down to it is not part of the rezoning, but would be part of the conditions of this case. As the mayor stated, this is a rezoning to P1. It is one of two sites, and Mid-American Energy Company is considering for an expansion of an electric substation in the South District. Later on in the agenda, you'll see a conditional use permit application that we're making a recommendation on as well. Again, Mid-American is only considering one of these sites, but has two applications since they're still working through the details of which will be the more favorable site for them. Like I said, they've been searching for one site, and this site is the one that requires a rezoning. So this shows the current zoning, which is IDRM. IDRM does not allow for electric substations currently. Basically, it would be considered a basic utility use, and so it does need to have a zoning change to it. On a previous agenda, you started considering some zoning code text changes to change what can be allowed in the P1 zone, so this would be a follow-up to that text change. They kind of work together. Not only would a midair, midam be able to use that, but that is a zoning code text change this staff has considered for other reasons. When we review rezoning, there are two criteria that we typically look at, and we did that in this case, the first being consistency with a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does provide goals for efficient use of resources, including well-planned infrastructure and locating within city limits, the kind of infrastructure that supports urban-style development, which of course, electricity would be a component of a successful urban density of development. The South District Plan and Comprehensive Plan indicate this area is appropriate for future residential development in the South District, and I'm sure you're aware, we've adopted a form-based code to encourage highly-connected street and trail networks and a future development in that area. Therefore, a substation is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies for efficient infrastructure and land development, as well as future land use designation in this area. We also consider compatibility with existing neighborhood character. This particular site is in a location that has not yet been developed. There are no nearby residential development in the vicinity, and as I said, as I said, a substation would be important for encouraging future growth and development in the South District. Its location is near existing transmission lines for this particular utility and adjacent to a thousand-foot buffer around the Iowa City wastewater treatment plant. Access to the site would be provided via Lehman Avenue, which is currently unimproved, and are subject to the conditions to ensure that connection could be made. And installing a substation prior to the surrounding neighborhood is, staff feels a good planning move so that as residents do move into the area, they're aware of its presence as they locate rather than having it move into their neighborhood after they are there. As far as next steps, as I mentioned, there's a zoning code text change under consideration already by you. This would be the rezoning of the land. Under the code change, there would be a hearing need to be, needed to be held by the Board of Adjustment for a special exception for the placement of this use, and then site plan review would occur. Based on review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with three conditions. Those conditions include the extension of Lehman Avenue enough so that the access could be made to the site, that the owner shall have, have prepared an auditor's plat of survey to align with those rezoning boundaries to record those, and that the owner shall demonstrate to the city that there's vehicular access to the subject property from Lehman in a location approved by the city engineer, and this access shall be in the form of a temporary easement agreement to be released upon dedication of right-of-way when the land is final-platted and eventually developed with a more thorough street network. At its May 4th meeting by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval with these conditions. And that concludes my staff report. I do not have a signed CZA, so I don't know if other staff have received that, or...
That is my understanding as well. We do not have a CZA in hand now, and this item cannot move forward until we have that.
So the applicant's representatives are here, so perhaps they'll produce items, they have a chance to speak.
Okay, we'll call up the applicants if they desire to come up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, members of the council, my name is Chris Posey. My office address is 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300 in Des Moines. I'm an attorney on behalf of Mid-American Energy Company. We are in full agreement with the staff recommendation on this item. I can tell you personally that for the last four years, Mid-American has worked with your staff, and your staff has been very helpful to us in finding a site. Mid-American does not have condemnation power to have a site here with absent private agreement of landowners. And we've received an agreement with this landowner to build the site here, but there is a specific condition that we will need your assistance with, and that is that they conditioned our agreement on the city acquiring the buffer ground for the sanitary sewer treatment plant to the south. That's their condition, and so we have two items on the agenda tonight. This site and also our site to the north, which is in This site and also our site to the north, which is another site that we previously acquired. It is now our backup plan. If we can get this site done, this is the one that we prefer. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have. As far as the zoning change agreement, I think Mid-American has signed it and has sent it to the staff. I think we're waiting on the signature from the landowners to the zoning change agreement. And Mike Pugh's here and he's going to speak, I believe, as the condition of the purchase agreement, of the purchase of the buffer ground. But I'm happy to answer any questions you'd have of Mid-American on this application.
Don't hear any now, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, please state your name and your affiliation.
My name is Mike Pugh. Good evening, everyone. I'm an attorney and I represent the landowner, which is two entities, but they're wholly related, Lake Calvin Properties and Sycamore Apartments. I'm here to voice support for this particular application. It's been several months since we have been talking to Mid-American and Mr. Pose about the site. Just to give you a little bit of background on sort of the sense of timing and the contingency that Mr. Pose mentioned, right now, the site is designed so that the stormwater runoff from the site is by easement to the wetlands area to the east of this particular site. And all that is fine if the city ends up acquiring the buffer area. It's about, I think, 1.77 acres of easement area. The landowner has some concerns that if that, the rest of that buffer area is not acquired by the city, that we've granted an easement now over the area that's really going to restrict future development of that site if the landowner is going to retain it and develop that area. So I would encourage the city, if that transaction is going to happen, that we begin those discussions really without delay. We're under a little bit of a constraint in our purchase agreement. We have an August 1 contingency date. And with the easement running across the property, we do need to have some assurances that the property will be acquired by the city. Otherwise, it poses some issues for us. We've discussed retaining the stormwater onsite and having Mid-American buy some more of the property. There are some obstacles to doing that with subdivision and rezoning and some other items that have come our way or the applicant's way. So I just want to alert you to that, that particular issue. With regard to this site, as it relates to the other site that's on the agenda at 9E, obviously, we feel that this site is a much better site. You know, it's always good to put a substation like this in an area before there's houses there. And this is where this site goes. The other north site, which the staff does not recommend, P&amp;Z unanimously did not recommend, has multifamily living there with several tenants that have lived there for literally decades. And the transmission lines would essentially encircle that site. So we feel that this is clearly the better site and we would encourage you to support that. The conditional zoning agreement, I will have that. Mr. Gordon, who's my client representative, he thought the meeting started at 7:00, but he's on his way down. He just sent me a text, so I will stay here until he comes, get his signature and get you the conditional zoning agreement. With that said, if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so council, I will not close the public hearing, but I do want to go ahead and... If there's any questions for either staff or for anyone that's presented so far? I won't close the public hearing, but I do want to give the public an opportunity to come forth if anyone wants to address this topic.
I do have a question for staff, because apparently you've all been sort of working this out. Are there plans then for the city to purchase this easement?
Yeah, we're looking at that. We think it's a prudent thing for us to look at as we anticipate residential growth in that area, trying to buffer the wastewater plant a little bit. So we're going through the appraisal process. And until that process is done, we can't really engage in the back and forth with the property owner, but we do have a aligned interest there. Of course, that would come back to you for approval if we're able to get into an agreement with the property owner.
So it sounded like there are some timelines, there are some deadlines to... I mean, the appraisal process, but do you all have any sense as to whether this is likely to happen within this deadline that was just voiced?
I believe I heard Mr. Pugh say there's an August 1 deadline and yes, presumably it could be resolved before then.
Any other questions before we get public comment? All right, welcome.
Hi, I just had a point of inquiry for...
And please state your name.
Oh, sorry. Elliot Micklin, City Liaison. I was just curious if the energy stored at the substation will be sourced from coal resources or solar and like more renewable resources? Yeah.
I appreciate that. We can't answer questions, but we appreciate you coming forth. Anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome, Noah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello. Please stop lying about not being able to answer questions. You can't answer questions. So that person that Bruce just lied to, I just want you to know that under state code, the city council can't answer your questions.
Noah, please talk about the topic at hand if you don't.
Thank you.
All right, any other, anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, so I'm not going to close the public hearing because of the CZA, but we are going to go on to the next item, which is going to be item number 9B, zoning code amendment, various minor code changes, ordinance amending Title 14, zoning code Title 15, subdivision code and Title 18, site plan review of the Iowa City Code to clarify requirements and ensure compliance with changes to state law. I'm going to open the public hearing and we'll welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a process we try to do annually. It may occur less frequently, but it's something that we, as staff, try to accomplish annually and we call it our code cleanup. The items that we bundle together for our code cleanup tend to be what we would consider very minor, not changes in policy, generally things that are meant to clarify how we're already operating. Sometimes we find definitions or word choices are less than clear. So this is our chance to rework those. We keep a list as we go through our daily work and when we find these, we add them to the list. The other thing that we try to accomplish with the annual code cleanup is things that are mandated for us to do by the state and changes that have occurred at the state that alter how we operate. So in this particular package, there are 11 items. There'll be another code cleanup item on a future agenda that is related to historic preservation items that are separately working its way through Historic Preservation Commission. So this particular package, as I said, contains those minor code cleanups and I'll walk through just briefly what's in here. The first is a pedestrian circulation. So included in your packet was kind of a summary and a reason for why this is. We typically try to ensure connected neighborhoods and sidewalks are an important part of a connected neighborhood for circulation, not just for cars, but for people. We typically do that through our processes that have to do with rezoning and/or plating. But occasionally, we get infill projects that aren't going through those projects. They're already zoned appropriately and they don't need to be further platted. And in that case, we don't really have a mechanism for encouraging the connections that should happen. For the most part, we're fairly successful in voluntarily getting those. This would just be the cleanup that allows staff to include sidewalks being added as properties redevelop or undergo infill. The next one has to do with clarifying applicability of form-based code design review. When we started with this language in our code, we only had the riverfront crossings form-based code. So when we said form-based code, we didn't specify that it was riverfront crossings. Now we have additional form-based code districts, so this is just simply changing the language to be more precise about which one we're talking about and when. Again, this is another item that's mandated by the state, has to do with the requirements for granting a variance. State case laws dictated that we change our approval criteria, so this would just bring us in alignment with requirements by the state. The next one is about utility-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems. This is how to measure some of the distances that are required to be measured in our ordinance, just to be more clear about what two things we're measuring between. This is a, next one is about bicycle parking spaces. Staff already, as we review site plans, provide feedback to applicants about the correct design of bicycle parking. We use industry standards that are developed by national organizations for bike ped planning. This addition to our code would just be to put in our code upfront what we're going to tell an applicant anyway when they go to design their bike parking for their site plan review. So trying to get ahead of and give more information to our applicants so they know what staff's expectations are early in the process. The next one is removing special provisions for privately-owned signs in public places. So our sign code gets into details about signs on city-owned property that doesn't need to. So this is just eliminating redundancy in the control over signs. The next one is a definition, clarifying definitions for family. This is again mandated by state law changes. We did go through a code cleanup previously when state law changed in 2018. This is just catching a few more of those definitions for clarity. The next one has to do with the definitions for trees. Fixes an oversight in definitions where there were overlapping heights in what was considered a small tree and a large tree. The changes are meant to separate large and small into separate categories from each other, but also relies on best practices per Forestry Division to lower the height for some recommendations. Again, this is a small impact, will have small impact to the number of trees planted there. Next one has to do with, again, a state law change and aligning our code with requirements for the way we do and do not regulate short-term rental standards. So because of some changes that came through in 2020 related to short-term rentals, we had to adjust some of our code language to get away from defining them based on lengths of stay and things like that. It does create a single bed and breakfast definition. So our code had sort of antiquated, or not maybe antiquated, but original wording about bed and breakfast. And now, as we know, a lot of those things have morphed into online and operate differently. And so this is bringing us into compliance with state code regarding the regulation of such. And then also clarifying boundary line adjustment standards. This formalizes and clarifies an existing process that staff has used for boundary line adjustments. We have an application process that we already use and a very defined review process. This is just getting it into our code again so that it's clear in the code for those who like to read that kind of thing, what we're doing. So next steps, these are zoning code amendments coming to you from Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommended these proposed changes. As I said, the pool of things that we keep track of. And at their April 20 meeting by a vote of 6 to 0, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval. I'm happy to try to answer questions, but I will tell you my technical expert on this is Kirk. So if you have a question I can't answer, I might have to bring back some answers from Kirk.
I think you're going to get away. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
All right, council discussion.
I just appreciate that staff keeps track of these things so that things can get cleaned up on a regular basis.
I got a kick out of the definition of a tree.
Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. 9C is zoning code amendment, private utilities in P1 zones. Ordinance amend in Title 14, zoning codes will allow private basic utility uses in P1 zones to standardize the public zone section and to amend basic utility improvement criteria. And this is second consideration. Staff has requested expedited action.
So I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Alter.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item 9D is zoning code amendment, drinking establishments. Ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning regarding drinking establishments. This is second consideration and staff has requested expedited action. Could I get a motion to waive second consideration, please?
I move that, pardon, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage to do council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item 9E, conditional use permit, north of Country, County Lane. A letter of recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustments regarding a conditional use permit application for an electrical substation north of Country Lane and west of Sycamore Greenway in unincorporated Johnson County. And could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter. Second, Burgess.
All right, and we're going to welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned, this is the second of two potential sites Mid-American is considering. This is the northern one and as you mentioned, along Country Lane. I'm shown here in the dark, the dark black line in this case is the site. So it's immediately north of Country Lane, west of the Sycamore Greenway and just off of Soccer Park Road, approximately five-point acres. It is inside the city's growth area, but it's still located in unincorporated Johnson County. So this is a case that comes before you because the county's rules require that conditional use permits get a recommendation from the city. It's not a requirement of a fringe area agreement, but it's a requirement of county code. This shows its current zoning in the county. This exhibit shows the footprint of the substation and that green line would be that property boundary that was previously the black line in the other exhibit. And then also shows in kind of the color lines, the location of the transmission lines as it would come into and out of the substation. This is a close-up a little bit of that site again. On the far left side of the screen is the extension of public road that would be required in gray to connect to the driveway in white that extends across your screen to the site. As I mentioned before, we review these things against our current and future land uses. The subject parcel will likely be included in the future expansion of the city's limits as in the South District. It's indicated, there's no structure currently on this particular site, but it is surrounded by development. Let me go back a slide here and show you in the city. So what's not bright yellow here is city-zoned land, so the RM12 to the south, the RS8 to the east, and some of the interim districts to the west are in the city. And as I said, it's in the South District and the future land use plan map identifies this as appropriate for residential development and has a form-based code designation for it, should it... And as I said, it's in the South District, and the future land use plan map identifies this as appropriate for residential development and has a form-based code designation for it, should it come into the city through annexation and be redeveloped. City's analysis includes several elements that make this a less desirable site than the previous site to the south as far as the city's position is. One is that it's immediately adjacent to the Sycamore Greenway, and as you can see, some of those transmission lines coming in and through do impact the Greenway. And the Greenway has got a trail through it that's used by city residents and others in the community. There is an existing multifamily residential development directly to the south, and I believe as one of the speakers said in the previous application, that's rental, but it does have tenants that have lived there for many years. Regardless of your tenancy and length, it is a place where people do live, and so it would have an impact there coming in to a neighborhood that's already starting to develop. Those transmissions lines would completely encircle that residential development along all of their sides to kind of come in and go out of that site. As I showed in the previous site plan snapshot there, is the proposed driveway access to the substation. It would be very long, and it's not typical of what we would prefer to see as the neighborhood develops, where there'd be a long driveway kind of running parallel to the street network that would eventually hopefully develop in a grid in this neighborhood, so it's less than ideal in that circumstance. And then also, this particular layout makes it difficult to integrate the substation into the future vision of the South District Form-Based Code, as I mentioned. So this is a conditional use permit. The final deciders are the county, but it does come through a recommendation process at the city. Site plan review, because it's a large site, would be required by our fringe area agreement, so if the county were to pursue this, allow this, and the site would develop staff. The city would still have a chance to make comment on that site plan, but the construction and all of that would be in the county. So based on analysis as presented, staff did recommend denial of this proposed application. And at its May 4 meeting, by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended denial of the application. As I mentioned, because this is going to the county, and they're the ultimate deciders, are included in our response back to the county, some conditions that if they were to proceed with the site, staff would still recommend and would like to see included, including the dedication of the extension of Soccer Park Road right-of-way to the city, so that there's a public access to that site, and city review of the site plan per the fringe agreement. And then also, the way their transmission lines would need to lay out, they'll actually need to get city approval for them to cross the trail network. They would need to run the lines not just in the right-of-way, but across city property as well. So that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer questions.
I hear nothing. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chris Poe is again, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300 Des Moines for MidAmerican Energy. You can see from this plan, this is our backup plan now for substation. It was our first plan, but it gave rise to the second plan, because I don't know if we can put backup here. I don't know how to use your computer, Danielle, I'm afraid. I might start a fire. The map.
This one?
No, the area map. There we go. The area that encircled in purple there is multifamily ground that happens to be owned by Mr. Gordon in his interest, and Mr. Pugh, who's here, who happened to have the land to the south. So this plan became sort of the mother of invention of getting us to the south side of Lehman Avenue, but as we explained in item 9A, we do need the city's assistance to finish up buying the sanitary sewer buffer park. So our plan with this is to take the recommendation that the city is giving of denial, and we're gonna sit on it. We're not gonna go to the county with it. We're hoping that 9A will work out and that we can use that site, and we would not proceed with this to the county. Meanwhile, we just want to have all our steps done with the city, that if we have to go to the county and it doesn't work out, then we can take that option. It's not our intention to take this option. Instead, we'd rather work on the one that's to the south. I think, if you have questions, me, I'd be glad to answer them, but I think the zoning change agreement for 9A is now been delivered, so if you want to take care of 9A too, you might be able to do that.
For the benefit of council, I do have before me a fully executed conditional zoning agreement for 9A, and so when we are done with this item, Mr. Mayor, I will suggest you return to the public hearing on 9A.
Great. I'm happy to answer any questions you have here on 9E, or 9A again, if you want.
Mr. Poe, do you happen to know, sorry, over here. Do you happen to know if the energy that would be managed through the substation, wherever it be located, would be generated from coal sources or renewable sources, or what the mix would be?
I don't know the answer to that. What I can tell you is the existing transmission line, which is in kind of bluish-purple going to the south, that feet would be going right past the 9A site, that transmission line has been there since 1962 in time. So whatever the, whatever electricity is going through the grid, be it coal, solar, whatever, is going through that, those lines, and the goal of the substation is to transform the power down to residential and commercial voltage that can be used. The 161 lines that are, have been out there since 1962, those can't be plugged into the electricity grid as far as residential and commercial. So it's a mix of all power, but it's all running through those existing transmission lines that have been there for years.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the, want to address, that's a part of that team? You're a member of public?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We're gonna open it up for public discussion, so come on up.
Sorry about that. My name's Tim Lehman. I've got my little, I'm gonna put in the box there. I'm Tim Lehman. I'm one of the three owners of the property that at one time was the, was site number one over there, which would be north of the Country Lane Apartments. And we had been working with MidAmerica for two years now on that site, and I feel bad for MidAmerica, they spent a lot of money, and we've renegotiated a couple of times because we needed some more land for some more streets, which the city told them they needed. And as you can see there, it's open on three sides. We've got the buffer to the east side over there, the Greenway, the kind of where the walking trails are, and there's a good-sized buffer there. And then the rest of our property is farm ground right now, so there's nothing to the north or the west side of it. So a little disappointed that we've lost our site, and we're now number two versus number one, but, and I didn't find out about this until just a couple of weeks ago, because I was unaware that, of the second site or what was going on there. Just wanted to state my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Would it make sense to go back and finish 9A before and then come back to this one, just to do them sort of in the order they were presented? Because it sounds like this later one was not recommended, but the first one was, and so to kind of clear that off, and then, I don't know, maybe that doesn't make sense, but just for the sake of clarity?
Yeah, oh, I totally understand for the sake of clarity and so forth. I'm just trying to think if council can do that, given that there is a motion made and seconded.
And maybe not.
But if it's okay, it'd be great to close this out and then move it forward, but.
So probably not.
I guess my preference would be we finish at this item. I understand the timing issue that you're identifying.
Sure.
But if council feels strongly about it, we could do that.
Not strongly, no.
Okay.
Are we ready for a vote? If no other comments?
Just to be clear on which thing we're voting for?
Yes, I want to, yeah, so the motion is to approve a letter of recommendation, but we're gonna do a denial.
Right, yeah, to approve a letter recommending denial. It's confusing.
Yes, to approve the, to approve a letter of, the recommendation to, it's word, to approve the denial.
We're saying yes to the letter. Saying yes to the letter, yes.
Saying yes to the, yes, saying yes to the denial letter, if that's what you choose. All right. Everybody clear? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 9F, conditional use permit, 5010 American Legion Road. A letter of recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustment for an application submitted for a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit located at 5010 American Legion Road in unincorporated Johnson County. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
All right, and we'll welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a conditional use permit in the county, in unincorporated Johnson County. Again, their, their code requires us to make a recommendation on this, not a fringe area. This particular site is shown here in kind of that green highlight to the left-hand side of your screen, one of those lots along American Legion Road. The request is for the property owner to be able to add an accessory dwelling unit to their property. This is a county zoning, shown as residential, and this is outside our growth area. Again, it was, we look at and do our analysis, we anticipate what the current and future land use would be. It's developed as residential, it's not in our growth boundary, it's not likely to be annexed into the city in the near future. However, just as a thought experiment, our code as it currently is written would allow an accessory dwelling unit here, as long as it met the other requirements of the ownership structure. Who's to say what that is at the time? It does eventually annex into the city, but in this case, this is in the county, so it's subject to their rules. It aligns with both the county's future land use map and our fringe area agreement. Just to show the property, this is the aerial image of the existing structure and the plans that were submitted by the owner for the addition of the ADU attached to the existing building. Again, this is a conditional use permit, goes to county for a final decision, and any construction would be overseen by the building permitting process at Johnson County. So based on this analysis, staff did recommend approval, and at its May 18 meeting, by a vote of four to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval of the application. And that's it for staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Well, here's an accessory dwelling in it. Sort of way out there, but you know.
Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 10 is Gilbert Street Pavement Repair, Crandic Railroad Crossing Approach Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, direct the city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and welcome Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Scott Silver is Assistant City Engineer. So this is a joint project between the city and the Crandic Railroad. It's located on Gilbert Street, immediately south of its intersection with Maiden Lane. The impetus of this project is Crandic's need to replace an at-grade railroad crossing that is in poor condition. While Crandic is replacing the actual crossing itself, the contractor that has ordered with, for this project, will perform additional payment repair and a replacement on both sides of the crossing, upgrade non-ADA compliant curb ramps and approaches, and install storm sewer to improve drainage. Given the nature of how railroad crossings are replaced, Gilbert Street will need to be completely closed to traffic, vehicle traffic. With this being the case, a detour route utilizing Kirkwood Avenue, Clinton Street and Dubuque Street, Benton Street, Riverside Drive and Burlington Street will be in place during the construction of this project. Because of this impact will have on traffic in the downtown area of the city, this closure will be limited to approximately three weeks. The estimated construction cost of this project is $150,000. In terms of the schedule, we are hosting the public hearing tonight, June 6. Bid letting will be on July 5. We will bring this back to you for award at the July 12 council meeting, because our construction is planned to start early August, and then finish up before the commencement of the University of Iowa Fall Semester in mid to late August. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I think there are no questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
Council discussion.
As much as I fear the closing of that road, it truly is a major north-south intersection, so I'm glad to hear that you're gonna do the best you can to shorten that period of time, but it'll be great to have it in good repair.
Really needs to be done.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 10 is Gilbert Street Pavement Repair, Crandic Railroad Crossing Approach Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, direct the city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and welcome Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Scott Silver is Assistant City Engineer. So this is a joint project between the city and the Crandic Railroad. It's located on Gilbert Street, immediately south of its intersection with Maiden Lane. The impetus of this project is Crandic's need to replace an at-grade railroad crossing that is in poor condition. While Crandic is replacing the actual crossing itself, the contractor that has ordered with, for this project, will perform additional payment repair and a replacement on both sides of the crossing, upgrade non-ADA compliant curb ramps and approaches, and install storm sewer to improve drainage. Given the nature of how railroad crossings are replaced, Gilbert Street will need to be completely closed to traffic, vehicular traffic. With this being the case, a detour route utilizing Kirkwood Avenue, Clinton Street and Dubuque Street, Benton Street, Riverside Drive and Burlington Street will be in place during the construction of this project. Because of this impact will have on traffic in the downtown area of the city, this closure will be limited to approximately three weeks. The estimated construction cost of this project is $150,000. In terms of the schedule, we are hosting the public hearing tonight, June 6. Bid letting will be on July 5. We will bring this back to you for award at the July 12 council meeting, because our construction is planned to start early August, and then finish up before the commencement of the University of Iowa Fall Semester in mid to late August. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I think there are no questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
Council discussion.
As much as I fear the closing of that road, it truly is a major north-south intersection, so I'm glad to hear that you're gonna do the best you can to shorten that period of time, but it'll be great to have it in good repair.
Really needs to be done.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11 is additional social justice and racial equity grant allocations for fiscal year 2022. This is a resolution adopting the additional social justice and racial equity grant allocations for fiscal year 2022. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Weiner.
All right.
So I think it's, you know, so important that the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant is available within our community. There are organizations that really do a lot of hard work, that really do support and promote some of the initiatives that this was created to do. I am happy to see that we, you know, allocated another $25,000. And unfortunately, only two individuals did respond, and I'm not sure some of the rationale there. Sometimes if things come through application, sometimes people don't see it in time. I don't know the, you know, maybe some of the challenges there. But thanks to the commissioners for reaching out and having some discussions surrounding this. So as I do look at the two applicants that did respond, I think the Iowa Chapter of American Student Dental Association, what they're wanting to do is really reach out and have an impact on students and to reflect on their own biases and learn about racial injustices that exist, you know, even today. And I like the opportunity for this project to move forward, so I'm going to be supporting that. The Iowa City Catholic Worker House, I am, you know, when I read this, I understand there's a new program, and it's an immigrant-led initiative that will publish a Spanish-language newsletter and train immigrant workers in community leadership. So as I read through this and what they're wanting to do, we have access to their application, all of us, there is some concern that I do have with this one. One, it states including lobbying, letter writing, and direct action. So when I kind of look at what happens at the state, some of the state laws don't allow for funding to go directly to a lobbying-type of organization. And in our role here, I think we have experienced, quite frankly, the lobbying that the Catholic Worker House has shared. I am reminded that, you know, people in our public need to have real factual information. And also, when I think about how partnerships work within this community, I think conversations must be had. When people are having some concern, especially if we're talking about an entity, that it be presented to the council, whether it's to staff or to individual councils. And for this one here, I am not recommending any funding. And what I would suggest is that, since only two applicants actually applied, I would suggest to this council that we not open it back up, because I think people did have opportunity to apply, but we just award the Iowa Chapter of American Student Dental Association. And, but that's my, that's my thought on this.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the members of the Human Rights Commission for your time, energy, and commitment that each of you always puts into your work on the commission. It's apparent that you put a lot of thought into how you award the funds that are allocated for distribution by your commission. But with that said, I do not agree with the amount of $19,560 to the Iowa City Catholic Worker House. Over the years, I have realized that you can learn a lot about people by what they say or do. It is usually an accurate indicator of whether they are deserving of your trust and confidence. Trustworthy people are respectful. They don't resort to intimidation, humiliation tactics. It is true that the Catholic Worker House has helped to feed and house people in need and have done that very well. However, in the past few years, they have come before our council, other councils, the Board of Supervisors, the meetings, and showing intimidation tactics, attempting to belittle, discredit us in public and in the news media, as well as towards the Center for Worker Justice. For that reason, I can't in good conscience approve of this award to the Catholic Worker House.
One of the things that I viewed these applications through the lens was, I was on the HCDC for one and a half terms and saw a number of applications come across. And while HRC has their own way of adjudicating and assessing the recommendations that come to us, nevertheless, I think that there's some kind of commonalities for, you know, community-based projects. And some of the lens, some of the things that are, that I take into consideration is sort of looking at its history of the agency, of the project itself, its possibility for sustainability over time, its collaborations with others in the community. Are there multiple funding sources? Again, that's kind of irrelevant in this situation. To my mind, this is such a new project, and I completely applaud the fact that actually, as a grassroots organization, you are able to mobilize and do so much. I have concerns, though, about the project and the way it would move forward, because it's a very different measure, or a different, I'm not sure how to phrase this. This has now become much more structured, and I have not seen proof in the past of there being structured, organized activities. So from that lens, I have less confidence in the sustainability of this project. So that's where I'm at. It's, I'm not seeing this as necessarily the right fit for this amount of money.
I think I'm going to bring something a little bit different to the conversation, because my background's a little different. First of all, I'd like to say the idea of a Spanish-language newspaper is really cool. Our journalism, background journalism professor, so our country has a really cool history of immigrant-language newspapers, many of which have gone. I mean, you go back 100, 150 years, there's tons and tons of them. Now there's just a handful. So I think in that regard, I think that's really cool. I support local journalism. You know, I personally subscribe to all of the existing journalistic outlets who are reporters here in the room. Not brown-nosing, I promise. And should there be a Spanish-language newspaper, I would, and open for subscriptions, I would subscribe to that as well. Probably have to get my kids to help me, because my Spanish is really poor. Theirs is better than mine. That said, I don't think it's the place of a city government or a local body of government to fund a newspaper. I think that creates all kinds of other issues, you know. So while I personally support it, I don't think that that's, that's the business of a city to say. A local government, you know, newspapers, journalism, needs to be independent of the people they talk about and cover. And I just, I couldn't, you know. So that's, that trips this up for me.
Well, I'd like to say first thanks to the commission for reviewing these two proposals and to the applicants as well. I too have some concerns with the Catholic Worker House proposal. And I have really admired the work of the Catholic Worker House over the years. I found them inspiring in their work. This, this particular proposal, though, I think seems overly ambitious. It has, there's a lot of pieces to it. You have the newsletter, as well as, you know, the trainings in community leadership, identifying issues, and then taking action to address them, and identifying what some of those actions are. It seems to me, you know, that if someone were to want to, if I were to accept that, I would really like to see that demonstrated capacity within the organization to be able to pull that off. It just seems like a lot, a lot of effort there. And I would want to see a better understanding of what the project's schedule and, you know, the cost breakdown, work plans, demonstrated capacity, so that, so that we could all be sure that it could be properly delivered. So for now, I would, I would not support the project as it's proposed.
So I have to say that, you know, and while I may not agree with everything that, that was brought before us and the way it was brought before us, I was, I really admired the skills and the organizational ability that was brought, that was brought to the table and brought a lot of people into our council chambers, to the Board of Supervisors, who probably never would have had, who may well not have had a voice or representation but for those efforts. So for me, the portion of this that I would be interested in approving is the community organizing portion. So to give people the skills and the, and the capacity to continue that sort of self-representation and understanding of how to function with local government and making sure that you vote and so forth. I, I share the concerns about the newsletter and supporting, supporting, but, but I, but I personally, I would be willing to award a lesser amount to continue the organizing skills, because I think those are vital to anyone in this country, anyone in this city, anyone in this county who wants to, who wants to be, participate as a resident.
I think I agree that those are, I mean, it's near and dear to my heart. I have a similar concern about the city picking and choosing which organizations get to train their, get our support in training their activists. I actually think that's great. I mean, like, it's a weird, it's a weird place to find myself in, because I agree with everything you said, and I think that the, you know, the stuff on the application about, you know, helping people find homes and, and supporting that is all great. But again, I have kind of the same thing. It's like, as a governmental body, do we have a job? Or is it wise for us to say, okay, we're going to support these training efforts as opposed to this other organization? And I'm finding myself not terribly comfortable with doing that. Kind of a similar, not exactly the same as with the newsletter, but kind of not completely dissimilar either. But, but I appreciate the point you made.
You know, I think, you know, my comments earlier that I made, the example that I would give is, if an organization, you know, wanted to follow suit and come before the council and request some money, you know, for the same type of request, I mean, we, we would have given some money to one organization, and now we would, you know, give another, we would have to really consider giving money to another organization, even if that organization did not fundamentally represent our needs. If we're, I mean, I think the easiest-case scenario would be if KKK members came before this council and requested, you know, some funding to, you know, for their lobbying acts. You know, would council be in, you know, we would be in a position to really consider that. And so that is why I don't, that's another rationale for why I don't support this.
Thank you for articulating that, Mayor. And Sean, I've been just listening to the conversation and feeling uneasy about it, and I think that's, that's why. I don't want to set that precedent for picking and choosing the kind of advocacy that we think is, you know, worthy or unworthy.
On a personal level, I would love to do that, but as a representative of the community and that, I don't feel that's in my, what I should be doing, so.
And I think similar to, kind of where my mind was on the Center for Worker Justice expanded proposal, I think just, you know, knowing that there are other funding sources out there that maybe don't have that concern or constraint, that, given that this project was able to, you know, continue to be viable through even the delay in the application process.
I did hear support for the Iowa Chapter of American Student Dental Association. I do not hear majority support of Iowa City Catholic Worker House. I did want to just clarify, if anyone else was considering a partial. I heard one request for partial. Is there anyone else that would consider partial funding of the Iowa Catholic Worker House, Iowa City Catholic Worker House?
I don't think we have enough information to go down that road, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So then the other, so I'm going to take that as a no. And then the other question that I have is, so we'll have to amend this?
Right, we would need a motion to amend, a second, and a, any vote on the motion to amend to exclude the Catholic Worker House award, and then, of course, the return to the original motion to approve what remains, which would be for the Iowa Chapter of the American Student Dental Association award.
Okay. And then, before we end this opportunity, council, are we, there were only two applicants at this point. Did we want to do anything further with those funds? Or, or do we just leave it as is? I personally think we just leave it as is for now.
I mean, they went back, what we heard is they went back to all the other applicants, and, and these were the only two who still had projects that could potentially go forward.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, would the money just roll over into next year's grant pool?
It was coming from our.
Yeah, it's coming from a separate source.
That's right.
And that money is protected, so in a sense, yes, but it just wouldn't be tied to this grant process.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Could I get a motion to amend?
To amend this motion to exclude the grant to the Iowa City Catholic Worker House?
I move to amend the motion to exclude the Catholic Worker House, Iowa City Catholic Worker House, and.
Move by Alter.
Second, Taylor.
Seconded by Taylor. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
No.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at six to one. Could I get a motion to?
Already have the motion.
Sorry, say that again?
You already have the motion to, the underlying motion has already been moved by council member Alter and seconded by Weiner. And so if there, unless there's further discussion, you're ready for a roll call vote on the original motion.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay. So we're ready for a vote on the original motion as amended. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is American Rescue Plan Act, Think Iowa City Tourism Recovery Sub Award. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a state and local fiscal recovery fund grant agreement with the Iowa City Corvail Convention and Visitors Bureau to replace hotel-motel tax revenue loss during the COVID-19 pandemic and develop, and administer a tourism and visitor recovery grant program. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
All right, and staff comments?
I'll be brief, Mayor. This is, this goes all the way back to last September when we initially rolled out some preliminary ARPA recommendations. One of those recommendations was to bolster the tourism industry that was impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So before you is a $250,000 agreement with Think Iowa City, our local convention and visitors bureau. And the use of these funds is divided into two pieces. The first $125,000 is for revenue replacement. So we are able to measure the lost revenue that the city would have normally transferred over to Think Iowa City. And that was, that was roughly $125,000. They rely on hotel-motel tax revenue. So we were able to look at hotel-motel tax revenue pre-pandemic and then during the pandemic. And again, that's about $125,000. That money would be placed or given to Think Iowa City to support their general operations. And that's building the tourism industry within the Iowa City Corvail North Liberty area. So that's, again, the first $125,000. The second $125,000 would be for a tourism recovery program. And this is envisioned to be a grant program to support tourism within the city limits. So we're, we're taking it to a more micro level there. But the staff at Think Iowa City would be able to support local events, help bring in outside events in. in outside events into Iowa City, basically work with community partners to bolster tourism over the next couple of years. The president of Think Iowa City, Josh Schomburger, is here and can talk to you a little bit more about how he might go about administering that grant program. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the use of ARPA funds if you have them.
No questions. Great.
I'd like to have.
Yes, we welcome you, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. Chair Person Porter here. I would, as a tourism guy, would echo everybody coming out for Juneteenth and Pride events next weekend. I appreciate certainly all the assistance from Jeff and Cassie and Rachel on this state and fiscal recovery application. Obviously, the effects of the pandemic were pretty dramatic across all industries and the economy, and certainly the local hospitality and tourism industry was not spared. Area hotel occupancies, which are normally north of 75%, quickly dropped to below 10% across the entire community. And two and a half years later, we're just starting to see some of the return of some of those tourism sectors like conferences and meetings and other activities. The ARPA legislation clearly recognized the tourism industry as a proper use example of these recovery and stimulus funds, and that will certainly be the focus of this Iowa City-specific grant program. It will be targeted towards events and activities and programs that provide a direct return to Iowa City tourism hospitality community, but also indirectly provide an impact here on the larger area. It'll amplify and ignite some of our most signature festivals and events, but we'll also be using the program to incubate and incentivize additional opportunities. Our current plan would be to roll this program out beginning in August. We've already had several meetings and discussions. We are very familiar with running grant programs, having been around for the past 40-plus years and doing this sort of thing, and that's exactly what will be treating this program here in Iowa City through the Recovery Act program. It's been done many places around the country and then just in a couple of places in Iowa City through the ARPA fund. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you again to the whole staff for helping us work through that application.
Thank you, Josh. Could you just clarify for me? I'm just a little confused on the wording on this. Jeff mentioned a couple times within the Iowa City area, within city limits, and you mentioned Iowa City specific.
Yep.
The resolution starts out by talking about spurring economic activity in the Iowa City area, and then further down, the resolution talks about within the Iowa City limits and activity within the city. So as a geographic area, these funds are going, when it talks about outside of the area, are you talking about the hotel and motel, the funds that are going to go to them to help bring their funds, their reserves back up? But the tourism activity is the Iowa, specific Iowa City?
Yeah, so the first half is certainly to replenish the lost revenue that we have, but we're an organization that represents the entirety of the community, Iowa City Corleville, North Liberty, and soon-to-be University Heights now that they have a hotel. But that's a few months away, I think. But the program we're going to run is going to be specific to the city of Iowa City and the city limits within Iowa City. So we're only going to allow applications and incentivize additional tourism activities and programming within the city limits. It will not be, applicants in Corleville, North Liberty will not be eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Josh, we heard from Kate Morland earlier that the Better Together 2030, you know, report is coming out soon, and I know Think Iowa City is a partner in that. So is this program at all informed by that process, or can you speak to that a little bit?
No, they'll be two separate things, but we do have also in our general fund, you know, we're certainly a partner, an equal partner to the Better Together 2030 Initiative. And yes, that program is within a week or two of actually being unveiled. I know many folks have been a part of it. There are some key areas that really align well with what we do, and then some areas that are completely better suited for other agencies and organizations in this community. And so in some areas, I think we'll do a good job as an organization in playing a convener and bringing and connecting people and getting things moved along. But in other areas, like one of them is, you know, obviously, our, you know, the river parks and trails and recreational opportunities are really well-suited for our area, us to lead. And so we will certainly be, not through this program, but through our general operation, be providing resources and time and energy to advance the Better Together 2030 Initiative. And we've, you know, that's something that really started between the Business Partnership, ICAD, our organization in downtown district, and that continues to, we continue to see some efficiencies there through our collaboration. And I think that's just going to get even better here when we make some announcements here in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Hopefully that answered your question, Laura.
Thank you much. No other questions?
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Council discussion?
I'm just actually staggered by the fact of what you mentioned with sort of hotel rates being, or not rates, but occupancy being a little north of 70% and dropping down to below 10, and that we still have all of those hotels in the areas, a testament to how, lost one, but it could have been so much more, given especially what those numbers indicate. So it's just a testament to how well the community and your group in particular, you know, have helped kind of shape and hold people fast, hold entities fast to get through it. So thank you.
Yeah, I do see this as a vital opportunity for the city. I think the claim has been kind of made for the support. The one thing that I've been very impressed by, when we think about tourism, people coming into this community, I have to tell you, there are so many people that come here that wish they didn't have to leave. And so the exposure that some of the programming that comes through Think Iowa City, you know, give to those that come here, it really does continue to put us on the map on so many levels. We have the University of Iowa here and other, you know, jobs and things, we need workers. So I really do believe that this is a great investment beyond what we see right here. And the other thing that I'll mention is Think Iowa City has been very intentional in just thinking DEI and being inclusive, and so I've been really appreciative for those efforts as well. Are we ready for roll call? Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13 is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 13A Civil Service Commission, Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through April 7, 2025. And council discussion. So we have one opening with no gender requirement, and we have two applicants.
Both applicants look interesting and perhaps even more significantly are interested. But I was taken by, I think it's Chi Oboko. It seems her qualifications, she has a background that I think could be well-suited for the commission, and while I know the other candidate, I believe her name was Ashley? Did I get it? She too has sort of an interesting background, but she also had a number of commissions that actually she just sort of placed a little bit higher. And she was more in the, I can learn and I would like to learn, which is great. But I think that, given those two kind of differentiators, that I was more taken by Chi. And I hope that I did not mispronounce the name too horribly.
I agree with that, Megan.
I would agree as well, yes.
It was difficult to choose between the two because, like you said, they both seemed like they would, were interested and would do a good job. Like you said, Ashley had listed several that she was interested in, so I would hope that she keeps that interest and we can find her suited to one of those commissions. But it sounds like folks are supportive of, I won't even try her last name, I'll just call her Chi, and I hope Chi is correct.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well.
So it seemed like the majority of council is supportive of Chi. So could I get a motion to appoint Chi Oboko to the Civil Service Commission?
So move. Weiner?
Second. Oh, second, Laura.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applicants must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 5th, July 5th, 2022. Senior Senate Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 15, City Council Information.
I would remind people that the South District has their Diversity Market going on every Saturday now for the next several Saturdays, 1:00 to 7:00 PM on Saturdays. And you too could get a beautiful bracelet like this from one of the vendors. They have, oh, a lot of jewelry booths, great food, wonderful food, music, and family of all ages. And despite the threat of rain last weekend, I think it did sprinkle a little bit there. Large crowd, but lots of space, so you can still distance. And I would just encourage everybody to come out and support all those wonderful vendors.
Would just like to recognize Moms Demand Action and all those who organized a Wear Orange Rally this past weekend at Weatherby Park and then did a march down to the Diversity Market for their efforts and for those that showed up to support smarter gun laws in the wake of so many tragic shootings.
So I'll tag onto that and say that in addition to the Wear Orange event, on the 11th, there will be all across the country, March For Our Lives. They are currently, if you can look up on their website, we literally are marching for our lives and our kids' lives and our BIPOC brothers and sisters' lives and everyone who's been, who's been the victim of so much gun violence. There are currently marches organized for Cedar Rapids, Davenport, and Des Moines. I understand there will be one here as well, it's just not up on the website yet. But I would encourage everyone to show up. And I had the honor of attending the One Iowa Gala in Des Moines as part of the city delegation on Saturday evening. It was a wonderful event. Our mayor was honored. Sicoas and the Great Plains Advocacy Group was honored. But to me, and no slight to the mayor, meant that the star of the show was Gabby Smith, who really is a 14-year-old face of courage, standing up to the transgender ban and hatred in the state like none other. She is poised, she is articulate, she is simply amazing, and there was tremendous support showed there for her. And finally, sort of on the, moving to the theme of the arts, in addition to having a great arts fest here, I just wanted to note that the James Theater is about to open. It was featured on the front page of the Gazette today. The nolties are providing a great addition to Iowa City in terms of theater space and community space. And it's where Riverside Theater was for many years.
Thank you for lifting up all those good events and agree with the Diversity Market. Please come out and patronize those vendors, they've been fantastic. I did just want to take a minute to reflect on where we were two years ago in June of 2020. Not all of us were here, but it was a very different moment in Iowa City. And we all, I know, got comments and questions about a particular incident relating to a police officer striking a young woman in a police car. I don't want to talk about that incident, but I do want to invoke, two years ago, the commitment that the city council made by unanimous resolution, 17 different points. And in the very first one, we made a commitment to reduce the public's reliance on police through the use of unarmed professionals. And if we don't take steps to accelerate reducing armed responses, then these kinds of incidents are going to continue to happen. When an armed response is what we choose for every emergency in our community, then force will always be on the table. And this incident was heartbreaking, and I go back two years when our children were tear-gassed. And that incident, after much inquiry and review and investigation and $50,000 in taxpayer money, didn't violate our policies. It wasn't illegal. These events are the price of policing, and I think we can do better in being creative and finding ways to respond to people who are in crisis, to conflicts among individuals, to violence even, and know that it doesn't, community safety has to mean something other than just police.
I apologize for coming in, but if I could add something to that, I would really like to see the capacity of the Guideling Center expanded so that it can, that it has the capacity to deal with a broader variety of people in need.
Any other comments?
This is a different, it's just a small thing, but it's a huge thing. Tomorrow is primary day, and I want to encourage everyone to go out and exercise your rights and vote. If you need to find your polling precinct, you can do that through the Secretary of State's website, and it's just sos.iowa.gov, and scroll through elections to get to where your voting place is. You can find it pretty easily by clicking through. I don't want to apologize for doing it as if it's an afterthought after such poignant and smart words from my fellow counselors, but it also seems fitting, too, to say, let's do what we can on a day in which we can make a difference, and let's continue to keep working.
I'm going to elevate one more time the LGBTQ+ Gay Pride events, that's going to be happening, so go to their website. Also, Juneteenth events, there's a few things happening, and this is the city's second year of officially having Juneteenth. And so as a city holiday, and so please, please, please go out and enjoy and commemorate these events. All right, if nothing more, we're going to move on to item number 16, which is a report on items from our city staff. We'll start with our city manager's office.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Our city attorney?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, and our city clerk? Item number 17, could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So move. Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are adjourned for the night. Take care.